Welcome to the June 12, 2023, meeting of the Garrett Park Town Council. Call this meeting to order. We have before us the agenda for tonight. Are there any changes? Additions, deletions, anything that needs to be updated?
I was gonna make a comment and I assume, well, I just want to bring it up from the council anyway, but one of the things I forgot to ask about was making the, I'll call it the east side of the north section of Keswick. It's basically where the Campos house is, where the cottage is. It's on the way to the pool across from the sidewalk. There's no, yeah, there's no parking area. I'd like to make it a fire lane, no parking. Because we've had a bunch of problems with people parking there. It seems like once it's made a fire lane, people get the idea with a $250 fine that they're not so interested.
Okay, so is this something you want to add to the agenda?
If I could, just discussion of making this a a no parking.
All right, so should we put that under new business?
Would that require some sort of external finding to make it a fire lane? I mean, we just make it a fire lane. What are the implications? Can we look into the implications of that before we?
Well,
speak into that.
Actually, okay, I mean, we can discuss this all at that point, just to keep things moving, but.
Yeah, so then let's do that.
That would be good.
If you don't mind, I'm not trying to blow you off or anything. It is.
No, no, we need to move things quickly. I know.
Then let's, let's add that to new business. So fire lane.
Proposal.
Thank you.
Okay, any, any other changes or additions or anything? Okay, not hearing any. Not here, any. All those in favor of approving the agenda as modified?
Aye, aye, aye.
Nobody else here to oppose. So the agenda is approved. Moving on to minutes, we have the May 8th Town Council minutes or the meeting minutes. We, these came to us prior to the meeting for us for our review, and I believe any changes were probably made as a result of that. Are there any changes that were not included in these, in the minutes as they are here?
Clarification.
Let me begin your mic.
Yeah, thanks. On page five, it says that the town council discussed lowering the threshold for informal quotes from the current threshold of less than 25,000 to 10,000. And I guess the question is whether we should consider more broadly, and I think we discussed this, the, the threshold for formal quotes, which is not mentioned as a, as an amount here. So in other words, I think what I would suggest is that striking the amounts from this one and then considering formal and informal together in the future, because it looks like we're diminishing our regulatory rigor is what it looks, but I don't think that is the case. This is for informal quotes only, but it doesn't say that.
It appears that I only printed the front page of the minutes.
Luckily, I have a full copy that you are welcome to have.
Thank you.
That should be for the relevant meetings. If it's not, please tell me. We're on May 8th.
Oh, page five.
That's not it.
It's the top of page five.
I just, I just think it contextualizes what we did in our discussion as less than I think we meant it to be. And I think the simple thing for now is just to cut the amounts out, revisit with amounts. Is that okay?
No, we discussed the amount. So I mean, yeah, these are the minutes, not.
Okay, but we also discussed the threshold for formal quotes. And I guess, I guess then, okay, we should add those in. I guess that's the other solution.
That's, that's.
Right. So if I may interject in terms of remembering the actual dollar figures, when we were talking about projects that must be bid out and go through the formal process using eMaryland Marketplace Advantage.
Yes.
The threshold currently is 25,000. At one point in the conversation, it was discussed of potentially doubling it to 50,000. At that point, I believe it was council member Eisenstadt who asked me about my thoughts on the level. And I said, so long it was, it was at least 40,000 because that would keep it on par when you factor in inflation, raising it from the current 2003 level to 2023 level would take it to about 43,000. So there were two dollar figures floating around. If we were to amend the minutes, what I would suggest is to indicate that discussion indicated an overall willingness to raise the requirement for formal bid projects in the range of $40,000 to $50,000. Town manager Matthews, do I have that correct? I don't have mine.
Yeah, I did not have that in my notes. And I think one of the comments I remember making, if you lower the threshold for informal quotes and raise the threshold for formal quotes, what's happening in that space in between? What is that process then? And I remember making a comment to that effect. I mean, I can make this more generic if you all want, but my notes largely focused on lowering the 25,000 to 10,000. I don't remember. I didn't have anything very specific in my notes about the whole formal quote discussion, but that could just be a gap in my notes.
Could we just, I have, I have language that I drafted while we were listening, just to say the town council discussed raising the threshold for formal bid quotes to between 40 and 50,000 and lowering the threshold for informal quotes from the current threshold of less than 25 down to 10 or to 10, as it says. Would that be okay?
I think that can be fine if that's what you all recall from the discussion in the minutes. I'm saying from a practical standpoint, there has to be a process between the threshold for informal quotes and the threshold. So there's, it's a little bit of a disconnect for me, but
so how about?
I don't tie them together, I suppose, in some way.
Since this is going to be coming back to us for actual discussion, what if we just made that paragraph more generic? Said with changing the thresholds for formal and informal quotes. And then we, Caleb, you could make note of, just to remember that we have that, would that, would that work where we?
Yeah, and I kind of remember it like Todd did, like where we don't want to have a lot of burden on the town office for something that's small, five, $7,000, but then we don't want to have like $12,000 go to the Maryland E market where
Yes.
But in the, but. Something in between.
Right, but, but since we're not talking about the substance of it, we're just talking about what happened in the meet, what in the meeting. So, so.
Leave it generic then, without numbers, which was the initial suggestion. That sounds great. If it, if it covers us for now, we're going to come back and revisit this, but I just wanted it in there because I thought it was an important, I mean, this is a lot of, we're talking about the, the city's financial dealings.
So what, how, how would you all feel about town council discussed a, a changing the thresholds for informal and formal quotes and bids? And this will come back in the future with that.
Okay, that's me, I.
Because we didn't make a decision, we didn't even really talk about it. It was like the first time it was presented. So I don't know that, or not first time it was presented, but it was the first time we'd had that discussion on that particular aspect. And so I don't know that it's I think making folks aware that we discussed it. And if we need to go back and listen, if someone wants to, we have the meeting, we have the, the recording that we could go back specifically, but.
It may keep people from thinking that's a decision, those numbers where I think a lot of us, or at least I was, I was trying to like grasp the whole concept and think about possibilities and kind of what the town office is up against.
Bill, what do you think about changing that paragraph to just be more generic and then emphasize that it's coming back in? For, for.
Yeah, that's fine. Just so include both formal and informal.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, yeah, at the end of the day, we still have to talk about it anyway. So it's not gonna.
Exactly, right.
It's gonna go in as an ordinance, if I remember right, from Barb's description.
Yes.
Any other changes to the minutes? Okay. With that, any, all those in favor of approving the minutes as amended or as to be amended? Those in favor? And nobody else to oppose? Okay, minutes from the May 8th council meeting are approved. Moving on to the special council meeting, meeting in quotes. Prior to the regular council meeting, this was a dinner with, with our District 18 delegation. Are there, you have before you the minutes from that? Are there any changes to those meeting minutes? Yes.
No, just vote to approve.
Oh, okay. Any, any changes required or? Without objection, okay. Then without objection, I'm going to go ahead and declare those passed. Let's see. Moving on to the next, the time is 7:40. Any residents wanting to make presentations? No? Okay, then we shall move on to the town manager's report.
Included in your agenda packet is the financial report for the month of May. As noted in the memo included in your agenda packet, we have several areas of revenues that are exceeding the budget. They include real and personal property taxes, year-to-date income tax receipts. As you might recall, for those of you who are more tenured, we got an unusually large payment in January, and we were not the only ones for reasons that are not entirely clear. Interest rates are still high, so our investment earnings are continuing to perform well. The one revenue category that I did want to highlight was account 5.4, other receipts. Since your last meeting, we got an unanticipated payment of $17,414.03. Not a letter with it, just a notation, basically saying that we were receiving this as part of a class action settlement. We were identified as an eligible party in a class action lawsuit brought by the city of Baltimore and others against Monsanto and its affiliates. And this particular lawsuit concerned damages relating to waterways and water supplies, including the Potomac River from PCBs, basically from the 1930s to 1977. Still trying to figure out if there's any restrictions on the use of this money, but for now we needed to deposit it. So it's included in account 5.4. Just a couple of comments about the expenditure side of the equation, obviously, since the mid-year budget adjustment was adopted back in January, we did have a member of our staff transition to part-time status on a trial basis. So you are seeing some lower-than-trend figures in personnel cost. Another category that I wanted to call out was 14.2 trash collection in the budget for FY 2023. Town council authorized 15,000 in funding for a pilot town subsidized composting program. As you know, that got underway on May 1st. So there will be savings in this line item at year end.
Any idea how much of savings that'll be?
I'd need to calculate it out because we're still, obviously, we have a rolling signup. So we still have folks who are signing up for that program, but I can have that information for you next month. Mayor and town council are well aware of this, but I just wanted to call it out for the record. I did send out something on the town forum. We've had a number of residents over the past number of months who had expressed concern about the possible clawback or recension of our ARPA funds. On June 3rd, the president signed the Fiscal Responsibility Act of 2023, preventing a default on the nation's debt. This legislation also rescinded certain COVID-19 funding provisions. All COVID-19 pandemic funds are not the same. There are, they are authorized by different federal laws. The particular category of funding that the town has is, is known as state and local fiscal recovery funds. Under the American Rescue Plan Act, these funds are already considered obligated for federal budgeting purposes, and that distinguished them from some other COVID-19 funding programs that were effectively clawed back. So hopefully with this information that's been widely distributed through the community, the concerns that had been expressed by some residents have been alleviated. We've been working, Kayla and I, on two projects that require historic area work permits. Both of these projects involve Penn Place. One is the installation of four exterior cameras at Penn Place. The other is a request to replace the current wooden doors, entry doors to the post office with metal doors with an automatic door opener for ADA access. We, Kayla filed the one for the security cameras. I filed the one for the entry doors. And we were fortunate to receive letters of support from the Garrett Park Historic Preservation Committee, and they forwarded that to the County Historic Preservation Commission staff. The County Historic Preservation Commission will consider both of our applications this coming Wednesday, June 14th, and the county staff has recommended approval.
Hey, I wanted to ask a couple of questions about this. So we've already approved the exterior cameras, right? So as, as what's the process if county historic preservation approves?
If county historic preservation approves, we will have to obviously pay whatever the associated permit fee is. At which point county will issue the permit. I will in turn go to our vendor, which you may recall is EAI, who has also done security cameras for Montgomery County, and we are in fact riding on a contract the county has with the AI. At which point I'll work with EAI to schedule when we can get in and actually install them. There is a decent probability that we would see the two interior cameras installed before we could get the exterior cameras installed, simply because the exterior cameras, due to their location and due to their height, will require a boom lift and scheduling one of those in summer, as we ramp up towards peak construction season, can sometimes be a little challenging. But yeah, I know as we're waiting on this permit, yeah, I knows that we are on the agenda for Wednesday. And every indication I've had so far from Montgomery County staff is that they don't see any issue with this, that they consider it from a staff perspective to be a worthwhile investment to protect Penn Place. So I am optimistic that we will have the official verdict and it will be in our favor.
And there's nothing that council needs to do?
No.
Because we've already done everything.
You have authorized funds, you have indicated the number of cameras. At this point, it's just a matter of turning to our vendor and saying, okay, ready, set, go.
Okay. And then as for the entry doors, Barb.
That will actually, yeah, that will actually need to come back to you all because there's funding in the budget, but you have not approved the actual vendor. George was, George Miller of our maintenance staff was only able to find one store company that actually carried the doors that would be identical visually to what we have now. So I'll probably bring, assuming everything goes well Wednesday night, we'll confirm pricing with the company because obviously, you know, this has been talked about for some time. And then we'll need to place the order. The last that I had heard is that they needed to have the automatic door openers in hand before they would do anything with the door. So this is likely to be a multi-month process before those doors are replaced. At one point, they were saying from start to finish, once we place the order, it could be as much as eight months. That was at the height of some of the supply chain disruptions. I'm hoping that when we touch base with them, it will not be quite as long.
Okay, thank you.
Just kind of moving on, I think as you all know, we hired the traffic engineering firm of Grove Slate to do for, look at four assigned tasks. One was the Kennelworth Argyle intersection, the Wayman Speed bump petition that we received from a number of residents and the Waverly Kennelworth Triangle. They are also looking at a provision in the town code and will be providing some guidance on that. Kayla and I had a status meeting with Grove Slate on June 7th. Assuming that you all will be meeting in July, and that will be discussed later this evening, obviously. We do have Grove Slate lined up to present its findings on all four tasks for which they're contracted at your July meeting. I also wanted to give you all an update on the Grotto property donation. I think you all know the history of this, so I won't bore you with that. There was some question earlier this year about what the process would be to accept the transfer of the property in discussing this matter with the town attorney, Ron Bolt. He recommended that we, the town council adopt an ordinance, which would obviously require two separate readings. He drafted an ordinance that did include some of the, I don't know if you want to go as far as calling them covenants, but the restrictions that the Pratt family wanted to tie to our acceptance of the property. For Todd's benefit, I'll just recap, which is that we would accept the entirety of the parcel, but would have the right to sell the non-grotto parcel piece of it off to adjacent residents at some point in the future. The family's primary restriction is they do, they want the grotto preserved and they do not want any structures placed on the property. Structures would include sheds, things of that nature. I believe council member Shoup was the one who asked at one point, what about a bench to sit on or someone wanting to plant gardens? The family was fine with items, you know, things such as that. They just did not want any structures put on any part of the property, whether the property is in town ownership or eventually in ownership by the neighbors. Last, I believe it was either Thursday or Friday, I sent the draft ordinance to Rob Pratt, who is the individual I've been working with from the family. I have yet to hear back from him, but highlighted the proposed covenant language. Once I hear back from Rob Pratt, that will be provided to the real estate attorney that we will be working with to will actually draft the the gift deed and handle settlement. So the survey has been completed. That was forwarded to the title company last week. So if everything continues going smoothly, I would envision that the ordinance would be on the July 10th meeting agenda for introduction. And then obviously, second reading would be somewhat contingent upon whether or not the council takes a summer recess.
Do we, as for the gift deed, my recollection is that we're going to wait to sign that deed until the other pieces were in place. So what's the order of operations? Is the ordinance before the gift deed or is it after or, okay?
The, the ordinance has to be adopted the way this is structured. So the ordinance would essentially allow the acceptance of the gift deed.
Gotcha.
So you need to count on two meetings to get the ordinance through. So as I said, assuming if you were to take the customary recess during the month of August, then the ordinance would be adopted in the month of September, obviously subject to town council approval. And then we would proceed with executing the gift deed and going to settlement. So if everything kind of stays on that course, it'd be sometime in the fall when we would actually take ownership of the property.
Thank you.
So those are some of the highlights of the report. I know I did include just mention that I had forwarded your direction from the May meeting to Jason Azar for the Waverly Sidewalk project. At the time, the agenda packet went out. I had not yet received the resulting concept plan from Mr. Azar. That was forwarded to you all on Friday, and I believe council member Shoup will be sharing kind of a, a more pleasant visual depiction of that concept plan later in the meeting. So if there aren't any questions, that wraps up my report for the evening.
I do have one quick question. It's not necessarily to with that, but is there any way that we can start getting rid of some of these signs that seem to be populating the street corners, especially in Waverly and Strathmore? I'm sorry, Kennelworth and Strathmore, where we seem to have dozens of these things.
The marketing.
Yeah, the advertising signs for.
Yeah, we can actually just remove them. And I mean, probably as a first step, we can basically pull them and notify the companies that they're not allowed to put anything in our right of way without our permission. But certainly we can pull them and just candidly, we can just toss them because they're not authorized to be there.
I would appreciate it. I would think a few other people might also appreciate it.
Okay. We can take care of that.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, moving on to our one action item, which is the contract award for demolition of the former Yendel structure. Council, uh, town manager Matthews.
Think you all know the history of the Yendel property. I guess just the brief description is back in 2006, a former Garrett Park resident donated the property at 11321 Kennelworth to the town. The conveyance of the property was subject to a life estate reserved to Mrs. Yendel, and that life estate has been terminated. There's a deed of conservation easement on the property that requires, among other things, trees of a certain size to be preserved without the specific permission of the Conservation Trust. And there's primary provision is that the property is to be used as a public park and/or a wildlife sanctuary. In April, we issued a request for proposals for demolition of the single-family home on the property. In response to that RFP, we received six bids by the May 17th submission deadline. A tabulation of the bid results is included in your agenda packet, but bids ranged from a low of $35,222 to a high of $86,300. The proposals were sent to Clark Azar for their review and comment. All proposals were found to be responsive to the requirements of the RFP, and the lowest cost proposal was submitted by Remac USA, Inc. Clark Azar, on behalf of the town, checked references for Remac USA, Inc., and Mr. Azar supports the award of a contract to, to the firm. As sort of additional due diligence, the town's arboretum consultant Phil Normandy and I had a conference call with representatives from Remac last Thursday. The purpose of the call was to discuss the firm's anticipated demolition approach and also to go over the tree protection measures, because that, that's what makes this project a little bit more complicated. Both Mr. Normandy and I were pleased with what we heard during that call. So at this juncture, our staff recommends that the town council award a contract to Remac USA, Inc. for demolition of the home at 11321 Kennelworth.
Is there any, were you able to figure out why there was such a broad range?
Not really. I think, you know, that was something that Mr. Azar and I discussed. I mean, it can be, you know, companies anticipated over, they're, they're built in overhead and profit. It can be how much time they think it's going to take. You know, it's really difficult to tell why the bids were a little bit all over the place.
Works in our favor, I guess.
It does.
It's like, a lot of times, it's like the prices, right? The old TV show where
Yeah.
Some of the bidders may be just throwing in a high bid. They're already busy. And if nobody else bids, they may get it for pretty plum sums. So.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Explains it.
Yeah, the one thing I just wanted to mention before I forget is I have checked with the county department of permitting services in terms of sort of what we could expect in terms of timing. And obviously, every application that comes to DPS is different, but on average, their time for processing a demolition permit application is 80 business days. So I just wanted to mention that, that this is not going to be a case that if you all were to award a contract tonight, that this house is going to be coming down anytime soon. You know, it's going to be sometime, George Miller is assisting me with the process of going ahead and getting the utility, you know, the certain utility shut offs and removals and things that have to happen before a house is demo, demolished. And as the owner, that's something we need to take care of. But we'll certainly try to get it taken down as, as soon as we can.
Can we sell tickets on the day?
You know, when we, when we, when our house was demolished, we actually sat across the street in lawn chairs and watched. It was so much fun.
We need revenue.
Are there any, any questions about this? Or can we just ask the question about?
I do have a brief question. And I noticed on the, the summary matrix here of bid results, one of the, it's for Remac who was, who we were talking about, and they said work plan and said yes with a asterisk, which must have meant a note somewhere, but I didn't find the note.
I'm sorry, I'm having a little, if I can't see you all, all of a sudden my screen is like whirling and I'm not quite sure why.
Right here.
No, no. My, my screen is like completely green and with a little thing circling. Yeah, I mean, I think all of them sort of, that was probably easier to kind of talk through, which we did with them. I think all the firms kind of handled. I think all the firms kind of handled it in the same way, but, um, I think in my estimation and Mr. Azar's, I think they were responsive. And, and certainly I think the call that we had last Thursday certainly reinforced their, what their approach would be and their work plan.
Okay. So there is no need for the asterisk next to the yes, I guess.
I'm not sure why, I'm not sure why Jason did that, to be honest with you. Uh, but he, he and I had a number of conversations, I think particularly when you have a, a, a spread like this, it's always a concern. Um, and he didn't raise anything. So I don't know if that was just a stray keystroke or what.
Uh, one brief question to, um, I was trying to find it again, but, um, it looks like the proposal was calling for grading and leveling after they demolish. But couldn't remember this building have a basement and then.
It has a partial basement. Yes. Um, so we did require for, um, any excavated areas that it has to be filled up to grade. There are, um, very specific compaction standards that are included in the RFP.
Okay. But I guess so they'll move some dirt around just to fill in that area. They won't be bringing in dirt necessarily to.
Um, that's really up, up to the company. Um, they didn't say anything about bringing in dirt. So I imagine they'll probably be moving it around, but they do have to just bring it back to the, the pre, um, demolition grade.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns before we vote on this?
How much are the tickets?
Ha.
And will it be ice cream?
It's to be determined. We're actually going to do a sliding scale. If you want to be close enough to get dust in your face, that is going to come at a higher premium.
Definitely.
We will be selling ear protection on site. If you don't bring your own.
You're like SeaWorld, but dust.
Ooh.
Yeah, it splashes them.
Well, um, uh, you know, so let's look at this. Um, so can I get a motion to, um, to approve this contract?
I move that we approve the, uh, contract, uh, with, uh, Remac USA to demo, to demolish the, uh, former Yendel House.
Okay. And the second, okay. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? All right. Let's, okay.
We got a quorum.
Exactly. Um, let's see, moving on to the next item on our agenda, the time is eight oh two. Uh, the summer meeting hiatus. Um, so uh, we have typically taken the month of August off for, um, the summer, for summer break. And, um, we started discussing that last month, but had to table it because couldn't quite get things, um, couldn't get a clear picture of who was available when and, and all that. And, and, and it's sort of complicated by the fact that Weedman Architects has, uh, made themselves available to come to a meeting if we were to have one on August 14th, uh, to present their, their work, their, their proposal for, or their, their work, the work that we've contracted for them to do. And, um, looks like we don't have enough availability of counsel to be able to do that. Um, so we will likely move that or ask them to come in September. So are there any, um, any objections to taking the month of August off, not having a council meeting? Yeah.
Yeah. Just to confirm, there's, I think at least one of us who can't come in August, right?
I can't. Okay. I couldn't for one of the times.
Yeah, I think there's actually two council members who indicated that, um, that I don't believe will be there in August. One definitively, and the other it sounded like they would not be available. Um.
If, if there's to be another meeting in September, could it, would it be possible on a Monday?
What would be the council? I mean, we.
Oh.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Joanna, if I may, I mean, I think it depends how, I would need to check with Weedman, um, to see how long their presentation will be. Um, you know, we can certainly try to do that as part of your regular meeting, just knowing that that would probably need to be the primary agenda item.
Would it be possible to do it in July?
No, their work is not.
Okay.
Scheduled to be completed until August, their contract.
Yeah. Um, I, Joanna, if I may, I did want to mention that, um, they will be probably later by the end of this month, I expect to receive, um, some preliminary, um, you know, floor layouts that, um, I'll be looking for feedback from, um, they just want to make sure they're on the right track before we start incurring more cost in terms of having Axios, which is the cost estimator, do a bunch of detailed work. Um, you know, I've reviewed it with them. I think they look good, but you, the, the most important thing is that you all are comfortable with the direction that they're headed.
Okay. So to, so to repeat what you said, um, you are going to send to us to review, just make sure that they're on the right track. This is not approving any work that's to be done, except approve that the architects are moving in the right direction.
Right. It'll be, um, if you may recall, there were kind of three concept plans, which is obviously goes beyond a floor plan, but the, the architectural firm was, um, charged with, or presenting up to three that were included in the base bid. Um, and that's sort of what they want to get a preliminary read from, on what they have put together for something more basic, which is just sort of the floor layouts, kind of trying to incorporate, um, the various elements that you all had specified. And kind of a low, medium and high, if you will.
Okay. Um, and what, and so, uh, we're going to want council input on that relatively quickly.
Right. Um, what I had said to Weedman is that once I sent it out to you all, knowing how busy your schedules are, that they probably needed to, um, provide you all with a minimum of 10 and more likely 14 days. Um, so that, you know, you could kind of fit it in between all your, um, work and personal obligations. So I will certainly text you when that information has been sent out.
Okay.
But I imagine it'll be towards the end of this month.
Okay. All right. Um, any, uh, had, is August, does the August, uh, taking break in August work for everyone? Hello, council member Bennett, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Does, uh, does the August break work for you?
Yes, that's fine with me.
Okay. Everybody else? It's okay?
Yep.
Yeah. Was, there was talk of a, uh, retreat meeting as well, is that?
I, I think at, at this point where, uh, there are just too many scheduling conflicts and we're going to get back to that.
Retreat.
We're going to, huh, we're going to get back to that. Okay. So, um, do we need a, okay, do we need an official vote on that or is thumbs up work, Barb?
I think thumbs up works.
Okay. All right. Uh, the next.
Joanna, before you do that, um, I, my system is still, um, not settling down. So if Kayla can make some introductory comments, we're going to have a blip in the tape, but I don't think I have a choice but to reboot my, my laptop. Okay. So Kayla, if you can talk real slow and I'll try to get back online so I can run your presentation for you.
Uh, okay. So, um, the time is eight oh eight. We're moving on to, uh, proposed changes to permit fees and assistant town manager Kayla, Caleb Uger.
All right, folks. I've always been told I'm more of the hare than the tortoise, but we will try shaking it up today to do a broad, high level recap and partially to stall for time as requested by town manager Matthews. In February, it was first kind of brought towards council for a thumbs up, thumbs down of, is it worth spending staff time to look at the existing permit fees? Part of what led to that question was that the town had recently processed a variance. Um, the variance fee currently stands at $50 and the town incurred, I want to say approximately $1,000 to $1,200 in legal fees. Part of the reason that there are such high legal fees associated with a variance is because it is one of the most common municipal documents to go to court. So it is something that both town manager Matthews and I agree needs to be done very, very carefully to prevent headaches down the line. We don't frequently get variances. When we were looking at the variance that was processed earlier this year, I believe we had only found one other variance that was processed in the past four years. It might even be five years. But that sparked a broader conversation about the status of permit fees in Garrett Park. What we charge, which permits have external costs with them in terms of what are we billed by our town attorney? What are we billed by our town arborist? Which permits are solely staff time and when was the last time that we looked at our permit fees? Quite a few of them haven't been touched for years, which means there is something of a disconnect between what we are charging and the costs incurred by the town. Um, a preliminary version of recommended permit fee changes was brought before council before. There was particularly vigorous conversation at the May 8th meeting. That's where we really got some firm direction from council. But town manager Matthews and I walked away from that meeting with the knowledge is we were not to factor in staff time for any of the permits. That was a pretty firm opinion held by the majority of town council. Staff time is mentioned on the presentation, but it is not factored into any of the costs that you will see other than the initial recommendations from May 8th. When we went into the May 8th meeting, we were under the impression that we were to try and capture both external billables from the attorney and from the arborist and staff time. That is to help clarify some of the discrepancy you'll see between dollar figures. But overall, the direction from that meeting was that we were to look at either recapturing 100% of the external billables for permits or 50%. Counsel had several advocates who saw benefit towards partially subsidizing the external costs of permits in order to incentivize their neighbors to improve their properties. And there were others who felt that improvements that would only benefit, you know, the property owners or those residing at the property should be the sole financial responsibility of those who would benefit from them. I think if town manager Matthews could give me a sign, I think I have stalled enough that we could potentially.
Yes, I think you have, Kayla. So let me, I apologize. I have never had that happen before.
You know, it is. To get back recording, right?
Yes, it should be recording.
I am so excited to have a visual aid because that really is just going to help for those of you who find it a little hard to follow along with my slow and steady pacing. So Barb, if you could go ahead and throw us into presenter view, just to make it a little easier.
Okay.
In part because the zoom is taking up a portion of the side.
Yeah, there you go.
Might actually block the dollar figures when we get into the individual permit slides. So, um,
Could move the zoom to the other side.
True. That might be. Yeah. Barb, I think if you could grab the panel of visitors, Mr. Lincoln, if you'd like to grab a chair and come up to the side so you can more readily see it. Given that you are our only in-person visitor, we've really have the ability to be accommodating. Barb, if you want to go ahead and head into the next slide, please. For those of you who zoned out during my stalling, this is what was, um, to be touched upon, the only thing I didn't mention that I will highlight here is that council agreed a 15% nominal increase was to be recommended for the permits that don't have external billable costs. Um, Barb, on your computer screen, could you please hover over the, or actually is it our computer screen? Please hold for 10 seconds while I try something.
Okay.
Our problem. So. Thank you for your patience. As we made a minor technical adjustment, Barb, if you want to head to the next slide.
Okay.
So our big one is the variance. As mentioned previously, it currently stands at $50. For, um, comparison sake, you'll note at the bottom that our town attorney charges $330 per hour. So 50 bucks equates to about five minutes of the attorney's time. Um, doesn't go far. Um, my question to council, seeing the dollar figures for 100% of the external time would put the permit cost at $990. Some members of council felt a desire to partially subsidize to the tune of 50% of external costs being charged to the resident. And that would put the permit fee for a variance at $450. My thumbs up, thumbs down question for council and council member Bennett, you'll have to, um, vocally chime in or turn on your camera, whichever is easier. Are you comfortable charging the full 100% of the costs that the town will incur from the attorney to the resident? I see one head nod in support.
Yeah. And especially given the, uh, information you gave us on May 8th regarding costs in neighboring communities, right?
That, that chart, I believe actually originated in March. So.
Okay.
So, okay. So given the cost of variance permits and other, in other jurisdictions, you think it's appropriate to, to do, to change the fee to be 100% of the external costs?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that build external cost or just kind of assumed average?
So we looked back at what are most recent variants in terms of number of hours that were solely dedicated to the town attorney, listening to the meeting, creating the document, turning that over to Barb. And Barb, please interject. I don't believe we had any follow-up questions or concerns about that document. It was pretty much just to get it originated and in the hands of the resident who applied for it. That is what we use to estimate the three hours of town attorney time, and that is what we would say is the standard for variance cost.
I would still, um, advocate for kind of sharing town funding and the, um, and homeowner doing it. One of the things I think would be important to point out, like I, as I was, um, the lead council member in all the recent variances in the years I've been on the council, um, it's, in all those cases, it's something where there, there was some, something was unexpected about the lot that it actually helped the homeowner do what they wish to do, which does make a better place in their eyes for themselves. But I can't think of any of them that were really at the expense of anyone else. Um, so it's, I think it's a misnomer, this, this idea that, um, the resident should have to just pay the full bore of it because they're, as if they're getting something, um, because I can't really think of any of them, um, where they're really getting something, you know?
So it's almost like, it's almost like, um, making up for the way that our ordinances have to be kind of rigid, and yet it doesn't apply to everyone, can't apply everyone equally. So in those cases where it's, uh, sort of the hardship aspect of it, sort of bringing them into the fold.
Yeah, some, something like that. Cause it's, it's, um, it's not a case where, I can't think of any of them where it was, I guess, I, I don't know if there's a better way to explain it, but, um, it's not something where the homeowner got something good for them individually, where it kind of detracted from even like their immediate neighbors or from the block or from the town as a whole. So it was kind of thing, things that have been in good balance of helping out the homeowner with a odd situation and improving the townscape. Um, and I think another misnomer about this that may, maybe driving what other communities are charging high amounts are. I think a lot of them may have the ability to kind of say that we have, you know, or that they have a certain lot coverage or FAR or something else that's admitted. And then you can get a variance to do more. We can't do that specifically by variance here. There's, um, in the variance process that's in the ordinance, it's not even the ordinance that controls it, but the variance process and the ordinance says explicitly that you cannot have a variance for added coverage. So I think that that's probably misunderstood by a lot of people. And I think if, if we did have that, then it would be more of that kind of thing that's out of balance where, you know, somebody could kind of push to get something that maybe allows them to do a big bulky house that, you know, adversely affects others.
So I think what council member Pascafi is getting at is we're not playing a zero sum game. The benefit to one property is not, as you said, taking away from any other. I do believe council member Bennett in the chat, um, also voiced support for only doing 50% of the external costs. So at this point, we have two council members in favor of 50% of the external costs. One in favor of 100%. Council member Shulp, you are the only kind of voter who hasn't weighed in.
I'm a decider and I go, I'll go with, uh, with the 50%.
Okay.
Can we just, can we get a true 50%, which is, uh, 495, since the hundred percent is 990?
Well, if you're going to do that, might as well round it up to five. Well, if you're gonna do that, might as well round it up to 500.
So just to make sure I have this clear, council would like to see a variance set at $500, which is. Horseshoes and hand grenades, close to 50%. And very simple math, which I do appreciate.
Then it's probably leaning ahead a little bit, but I I would kind of be in favor of something where the kind of the level of. Effort and complexity of like the. Of a variance process, maybe all the other fines, so they're not oddball numbers. Maybe they're just kind of all stacked together. So maybe. One is like five and three and four and two, something like that where it's kind of. It makes sense in order, like a like a deck should be less than an addition, which should be less than a new construction, which maybe is the same or. Different, right? Something like that, something where it looks logical in order.
I think we can talk about that as we go, kind of permit by permit, but I do appreciate the spirit of. Keeping things proportionate of when we're only doing a small project.
To vote on these one by one?
I am making you all go one by one, just that we can really holistically do it. So.
Or do we just, is it accepted?
I think at this point, by asking each council member individually, we'll kind of capture. Where we need to be. So if we get to a permit and you don't hear me kind of call on you, or if you don't volunteer your stance.
But voting is a good way.
We can vote, yeah. So we can vote at the end to say, when I read back through of council would like to set.
Excellent.
We'll just try and keep it nice and organized. Barb, if I could have the next slide, please.
Hold on a second. I don't know what is going on today. It is fucking. Make sure I didn't miss one, Kayla. There you go.
Okay, we are on to new residential, as in solely building a new home on a property. Currently, we charge $500 for someone to build a new home. We had originally suggested a higher fee in the March. Suggestions after debate in March for May eighth, we came back with a recommendation of $600. When we look at the amount of time that the town arborist would have to be involved with reviewing the permits to preserve. The numerous trees that we have. In our lovely town. We came up with a total 100% external cost of $450. Or a $225 permit fee with a 50% subsidy from the town. If we were to do a subsidy of solely the external costs, that would drop us below our current permit fee. So. I will simply highlight, we are expecting roughly six hours with our town arborist. That includes not only plan review before construction starts. But that also includes monitoring and follow-up. What we have sometimes found, particularly with tree protection, is for all that they talk a good game on paper. They don't always follow through the way we would like when they are out in the field. That is part of why those six hours are meant to capture. Some inspection and some follow-up.
It's probably best as an add-on for like a second phase of this, but something that Land Use Advisory Committee has talked about, and I think. Start preservation, I believe arboretum too. Probably need to consider putting together a bond requirement for contractors. So that way, instead of just. Telling them how to do the tree protection, which they don't really do, having them put a deposit down that they can have return. To them as they do it properly or not, if they don't. And probably upping the very low cost for damaging a tree.
Kayla, so that we can maybe come back to that at some future date. A bond for tree protection.
And other people have brought up, it's it's not even just the trees, like just concrete trucks driving over curves and breaking them and. They're washing their truck on the street, which hasn't happened in days. But, you know, so that those kind of things probably should be done as a add-on to this.
So the, so the question is, do we want to do?
So I think we have a couple of different things going on. So one, I have made a note about adding in a construction bond. And harsher tree penalties as Councilmember Pascaskey brought up. Councilmember Eisenstadt had his hand in the air, and we do try and encourage orderly speaking. You had something you wanted to raise about this.
Yes, so you recommend the staff recommends, I mean, maybe not you personally, but the staff recommends. 600 as opposed. To 450, which is the 100% cost. I mean, and.
I will.
And and also, I mean, I just again pointing to this March list. It seems that, you know, places like. Editions charge 4,000, Chevy Chase Village 5,000, Glen Echo 4,000, et cetera. So I guess. We're still really low, and I wonder if we can't do something about that.
So I will interject here and kind of recap some history. When those March recommendations were brought forward, much of the conversation at those meetings and in follow-up resident feedback. Centered around the idea of being good neighbors in Garrett Park, and I believe the argument was made that Garrett Park residents. Pay a higher tax rate in part to enjoy higher levels of. Amenities and staff support and that. There were certain members of council who felt that. It was worth the overall benefit to the community of folks investing in their property. To not fully recapture, and as previously mentioned in my stalling for time spiel, however long ago that was. Staff time was factored out. The May eighth recommendation that you see and that you touched upon. Had been put forward with the idea of recapturing external costs and staff time. So when we yank out that staff time, the dollar figure drops slower. And again, this is another one that would drop below what it currently. Is charged as a fee. I don't know. What formula was used to develop these original fees when I was trying to find documentation that outlined how we got to what we currently had. I wasn't necessarily finding a ton of, you know, someone scribbled math notes or a presentation like this or the memos that you had received where I could. Follow through in a linear fashion, how we got to this dollar figure.
Someone wanted to talk on the zoom, I think. Am I right?
I believe that was my husband, and I told him to turn off his mic.
Oh, sorry.
Do you know how old that $500 fee is? Like, you know, when that.
So I want to say all of the existing permit fees are at least 10 years old. Some of them might be even older than that. I don't have a clear sense of the origin, but I. Do feel confident saying. You know, these permit fees have seen, they've hit double digits. They've been around for a while. They're not super new. So this is another one where. My kind of question for council individually is. Do you want to see 100% of the external costs recaptured? Do you wish to only see 50%? I saw a hand go up for 100%.
No, no, no. Hand is going up for more than 100%. Because if we use Steve's system of, I mean, this is the most expensive one, right? If we're going to scale back as we go. In other words, the the house is the most expensive one. If it hasn't gone up in 10 years and inflation was, I don't know, 12% last year. I mean, this should at least, if we're even keeping the generous to the Garrett Park neighbors because. We pay higher taxes and we're all neighborly. If that's the philosophy, it should still go to 800, right?
Except that if. Except that the direction last month was to only focus on. Recouping external costs. And if that's the case, then it should not be above $450.
Well, can we revisit that?
Of course.
We're voting.
Of course.
Even even before the last meeting, I think the general idea was to just kind of like right size all these for now. Versus where they've been sitting, because some of them were very low. So. You know, if maybe there is another number that's not on here that is a little different than recouping costs, maybe that's valid. One of the things I meant to bring up earlier, maybe this is still a decent time for it, is we we focused a lot on the town arborist time and then all the things on the. Town attorney time, one of the ones we never cover is we get professional level review by George Martin on all of these. Additions, decks. And new, so I think a lot of this should be scaled. Maybe we should consider whether or not. Just thinking out of the box, maybe that should be paid and it's been discussed too in the past. What kind of insurance coverage is for that? Because he's like me, he's a professional, real licensed architect and. Doing these kind of things, you you may be opening yourself up to liability.
It's definitely not. I I mean, I don't, I sort of speaking off the cuff here, I don't know, out of turn, but I but I I. I think that we are probably abnormal in our use of a resident. Doing reviews of these things for official town approval of permits. And at some point, that is something that we should look at and and at and. In the future, when that does come up, whether because. George Martin decides not to or asks to be relinquished of this responsibility. Or we just decide that it needs to be handled differently. The cost for this, the external cost will go up substantially for 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 many of these things.
So before we get too far into the conversation. I do see Councilmember Bennett's hand raised, and I would like to make sure that we are giving her her. Time on the floor, since it's a little harder for us to get that. So Councilmember Bennett.
Thank you. I was going to suggest on this one that we go with the other. Method of just a 15, 15% increase of the existing fee.
If we can hold for one moment while I try and figure out what that would be. This point. Thank you.
So Steve, what you suggested were additional costs that are not factored in. So the implication of what you said is that we should ask for a higher amount.
Yeah, possibly, but to Joanna's point, like we're. It's not like we're going to actually go from zero charge to having a charge right away. And I think. That my point was to acknowledge that we're kind of getting a pretty generous service, professional level service for free, the town is and. That may change a little bit in the future, but I would think for for this one here, I would. Kind of like you were saying earlier, I think it should be scaled, kind of, they should all be stacked with the variance, like this one is probably the. You know, as much either should be equal to a variance or perhaps more, because it's more complex for for us to deal with than say like a deck.
So how would you be with 575?
I vote for six higher, keep the number.
Yes.
Was it grenades and horseshoes?
No, no one wants to go for 700.
Other caveat to that is the new almost always comes in tandem with the demolition. So that could be considered that maybe there's. Is there some sort of combination of part A and part B that should be considered? So.
We have not, I'm going to interject here. Barb, first things first, you went back a slide on me. Can you please go forward to new residential where I'm really.
Oh, sorry.
Game. There you go. Two, I am. Having a note here that says that 600 seems to be the sweet spot, both to factor in the currently billed external costs. But also as an attempt to estimate. Let's say an hour or so of what George Martin's time might cost. Given that we aren't currently billed for it, but if we were to go to someone else, because let's say George. Won the lottery, is taking a year-long cruise around the world and is unavailable.
Yeah, if I may. We do have to be able to support what we are charging in terms of the town's actual cost. So you can certainly argue staff time because that is an out-of-pocket cost tied to a particular application. But since Mr. Martin kindly volunteers his time and there is no actual cost to the town, I think it would be difficult to factor that in legally. Though I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not trying to practice law without a license, but that's sort of the general underpinning of. How you set fees and what your justification has to be.
So does that mean that we? Shouldn't even stick with 500?
No, I think you could stick with 500, you could go to 600 because. We, as a staff, have documented that the staff. And taking into account staff time as well as external costs, we could justify $600. What I'm trying to suggest is that. Assigning a value, a monetary value to Mr. Martin's time and having that tied to what we assess as a permit, I believe, would be problematic. Because we're not paying him. If we were paying a outside reviewer, then certainly we could take that into account.
Do we need to pay an outside reviewer if the citizen ceases to do it? Or can we, like every, like most other municipalities, get by without it?
That's a bigger can of worms.
Yeah, it's a bigger can of worms.
Yeah, we'll have to address that if it if.
I wonder if that could be like part of the thing with the bonds, maybe that's like a part C discussion to it, like what's the future.
May I interject, please?
Yeah.
Thank you. Something that I think we might want to consider is when we come back and look at kind of the idea of a construction bond and a higher tree protection fee. Is. And I'm riffing on the idea that we currently see with our trash collection. Where monthly Town Manager Matthews looks at the. Gas price. Information and uses that to determine if we. Pay a higher.
It's a fuel surcharge, right?
Yeah. We could try and look at having maybe an annual assessment of what would it cost us if we were to go out to. What have you, but again, Barb's point about if we're not currently getting a bill in. It's a little harder to justify. I can tell you when we were still looking at staff time across all permit fees. One hour of staff time, and that is both. Barb and a number and another member of staff working on it came out to about $130 per hour. Which would support the move to $600 for a new residential. We don't have any kind of special carve-out currently for. If it's new residential following a demolition. I would like us to talk about that when we hit the actual demolition. Just because, given the current chaos of the housing market. We don't necessarily have a firm timeline of you demolish in July, you build in August, and hopefully you're in your new home by Christmas. That's a little up near. But I did see support in the chat from Councilmember Bennett for $600. I believe that had support across everyone. Fantastic. Thank you all. Barb, next slide, please. All right. Building additions. Currently, we do a flat $250. This is an interesting one where other municipalities. Charge kind of a sliding scale based on square footage. Trying to do square footage math for a permit fee can be a little awkward, weird, and result in some really strange numbers, which I would like to try and avoid. But we can generally assume that, like building a new home, we would see. Six hours or so of the town arborist time. That's for plan review, that's for reviewing any tree protection, and then that's for the actual follow-up and telling contractors. You can't drive your truck over our tree roots. Or other conversations that Phil Normandy might have to have. Current fee is 250, 100% of the external cost would put us at 450. 50% would be 225. Building additions are a bit weird if we're trying to keep it proportional. Obviously, an entirely new home is kind of the big one. But a building addition can range anywhere from. Building on an office to accommodate the fact that you're now working from home to building on. And an entire separate suite because you really just need space from the in-laws. So.
Your your recommendation was 600. So it was a little, a little more than staff. And is there any reason you could save for that?
Part of it is the variability of a building addition. I'm estimating two and a half hours of staff time. But let's say there is. A larger building addition project. It's that person who knows their in-laws are going to be staying with them. They show up at Thanksgiving, they don't leave until after New Year's. They need to have a true kind of in-law suite. That's going to be a more complex project that's going to require larger plan reviews, more inspections. Just like you pay more per square foot, you also need more attention to make sure nothing. Is out of bounds with the building additions. I really would like to hear council's thought on where they're comfortable at. If they're comfortable keeping it one flat fee for any building addition. Or if they would like to try and. Do a scale.
I was wondering how you could do a scale without making. That much administrative work to figure out which part of the scale it is that it may, you know, covers the gap anyway. Cost you a hundred dollars in time just to.
The way to do it would be based on the cost of the job.
So you would like to see a percentage of the job cost?
Although I would, I would want a minimum. Of, you know, external cost, and then if it, it's a huge addition. Then then maybe the good neighbor of Garrett Park philosophy might diminish because we don't. We're not thrilled with the McMansionization.
But they're not allowed to go McMansion. There, I mean, there's a, there's a limit to how big they can go.
Right.
Wonder if it could be done by rooms. So maybe there's like a set fee for her room and then if. Once you get to say like three or more, like if you're doing a full in-law suite that has a bedroom. Once you get to say like three or more, like if you're doing a full in-law suite that has a bedroom, a living room and a. Kitchen that could be three or more, maybe that's the max fee. But if you're only doing say like a a back entryway, um, maybe that's. Hundred and fifty dollars and then it's maxes out at whatever the number is, but.
So I just want to make sure that I'm hearing this clearly for my own sake and also for the notes that town manager Matthews and I are taking. From Councilmember Eisenstadt, I heard the idea of a minimum. Uh, you don't go below this floor. Councilmember Haskowski, it sounds like you're talking about a ceiling of. It can range, but it can't go above this. Can I just get a thumbs up, thumbs down? What's council's feeling on? Would you rather have a floor or a ceiling?
I'm actually saying both because I.
Okay, so you want. Okay, that's where I got a little lost. It sounded like you only wanted a ceiling and Todd only wanted a floor and I was just like.
Yeah, so like small, medium, large addition.
Yeah, so is it something where? And I'm looking at the numbers I have and I'm throwing this out here.
Councilmember Bennett says she prefers a flat fee.
One flat fee. Might be easier.
And I agree with that because otherwise who's going to make the determinations of what is small, medium or large?
Well, you could do it by rooms. I mean, like a bedroom is a room, a bathroom is not. It's like an accessory to the room, like a living room is a room. Yeah, but it could still be splitting hairs. Yeah.
So we got two people saying flat fees.
All right, let's do. But fairly high since it's an addition.
Yeah, I wonder if it should be less. I mean, I'm just assuming I'm not sure if it makes sense, but I'm assuming it would be less than a new house, but then realistically the. The level of work in it is not much different for us.
Well, but six hundred is what we add for new residential.
Right, five hundred. It's two fifty now. It should, it, it's gotta go up.
Which five hundred, if you're doing a substantial renovation, yeah, it's really like close to it, but I guess. That's the the trick with like a flat fee, maybe four hundred, because that's the trick with a flat fee. If you're doing like just a very small.
Councilmember Bennett is chiming in with wanting a fifteen percent increase. For additions, which.
Two fifty plus one twenty five, three seventy five. Can we round up to four hundred? We'll use the Councilmember Bennett.
I think you and I are doing slightly different math, so I'd like to double check this. When I'm getting a fifteen percent increase to the existing two hundred and fifty dollars, I'm coming up with two hundred. Eighty seven dollars and fifty cents. Can someone?
I agree. I agree with that.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry.
So that would make it. If we do the roundup, then I would suggest the three hundred dollar fee.
Okay, so I'm hearing three hundred. Councilmember Bennett is in support of rounded to the nearest. I think it's whole dollar. Um, it sounds like she's in agreement with the three hundred dollar. Thumbs up, thumbs down. Are we okay with three hundred dollars for our building additions? Thank you very much, Barb. If I could have my next slide, please. Driveway parking pads. These weren't. A super huge part of our conversation in previous meetings, but. They were part of the overall conversation. We're estimating two hours of town arborist's time. Not crazy high. It would take the current fee of one hundred dollars at one hundred percent of the external cost to two twenty five. Staff recommendation back in May was two hundred. Um, if you only do fifty percent of the external cost, it takes you to one hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents, which is a weird permit number, but. Such is life.
How about one twenty five?
Awesome. Now, is this for anywhere or is this in the front yard only?
This is for anywhere.
Okay.
We do not currently differentiate between driveways that are in the front or in the backyard. It's if you're trying to drive a vehicle to your property.
Is that one of the things like, I may be wrong, but I think most of. The changes that are done with like pervious or impervious um, parking and driveway around the town is happening without a permit. So I wonder if we we probably should be pushing to review these in a friendly manner more. You know, for the longer term benefit of town, like we've seen some houses where almost the whole. Property ends up covered with impervious surface. Um, so it just gets, it it just adds to our stormwater concerns. Down the line, we probably don't want to get like too um, intense on it, like some of our neighboring jurisdictions, but. Feel like there should be some middle ground.
So Councilmember Bennett had chimed in in support of doing one twenty five, which is a smidge above that fifty percent. Fifteen, fifteen.
Sorry, I I did the fifty.
You did fifteen. Okay. Are we okay with one hundred and twenty five dollars? Is that the happy spot? Would you rather see it inch up to one fifty?
I think it doesn't matter. I think it's just important that once. We don't need to charge a lot and if it helps to keep it low so people don't feel like they need to avoid it, it might help. But I think revealing these more will help. I mean, there's been cases where. Parking pads were just put like precariously close to trees or you know, just other unwise. Ways it's been done in addition to the volume of the paving, so.
Okay, Councilmember Schulp, you are someone I haven't heard from on the parking pads. Could you please?
A buck and a quarter, one twenty five.
Okay, breaking out the action ear voice for you. One twenty five, going once, going twice. Sold to Garrett Park Town Council, one hundred and twenty five dollars for a parking pad. You can tell it's getting into the evening because I'm starting to. Get really goofy. Next slide, please. We are on to deck, porch and stoop. Currently, that is. It can be bigger, it can be smaller. It's a little bit of what do you consider a deck versus what to consider a stoop. Current fee is seventy five dollars. Staff recommendation in May was one forty. We assume it's one hour of the arborist's time and that's pretty.
Fifty.
It's just like half the addition cost.
Okay, I'm hearing one fifty. Councilmember Bennett, thoughts on one fifty for a deck, porch or stoop? All right, Councilmember Bennett would like to see a fifteen percent increase. I am going to very quickly do some math. Please stand back. A fifteen percent increase of the seventy five dollar current permit would take us to eighty six dollars and twenty five cents. I think everyone would want to see that rounded to ninety. Just for the sake of simple math.
Hundred.
Or a hundred.
With a hundred or a hundred fifty.
Okay, I see one hundred in the chat from Councilmember Bennett. I hear one hundred from the bidders at the table.
A question. Deck and porch are big things. Stoops are smaller things. Do we want to split it to go? Deck and porch is one money and stoop is a lower money because I think that would be fair.
That's fair. Like, how about deck and porch, one fifty, stoop, one hundred?
Seventy five, maybe?
Yeah, seventy five.
Yeah.
So just to make sure I have this clear for the notes, we are splitting out stoops. They are going to hold at seventy five.
Do we know how to distinguish a stoop from, I mean.
So we can.
Yeah, right, four hundred square foot stoop.
I'm going to. I'm going to interject here. I think short of pulling out Miriam Webster, we can commonly define a stoop as being. Small enough to hold a package from FedEx or UPS and for you and maybe one other person to stand on. A deck or a porch is something that you could actually fit furniture on. It is where you could conceivably comfortably sit for more than twenty minutes. We can obviously work up some wording to go into the permit to help people determine what they're doing. And if we see someone try and sneak in a porch as a stoop, we will. Address that as it comes, but.
Yeah, if they stoop that low.
You stoop that low for seventy five dollars.
All right, Jerely, are you good with stoop for seventy five and deck and porch for a hundred?
I think we said a hundred fifty.
One fifty.
Did we say one fifty?
Yeah.
There was one fifty.
Yes, she says.
Well, that was before.
Oh, sorry.
So I think we are good. Thank you all for your patience and focus. Next slide, please, Barb. Demolition. This is kind of our big one. We don't currently have a dollar fee associated with it. But we do insist people fill out the paperwork. The staff recommendation on May eighth was three hundred and seventy five dollars. We are thinking this would take three hours of the town arborist's time. As mentioned, when we were talking about new residential, we don't currently have kind of a buy one, get one fifty percent off deal going with these two. If that is something that is of interest to council, now would be the time for us to start talking. How we'd like to put a demolition permit on sale, but first we got to assign a dollar value to a demolition permit.
And it is legitimate that that does cause Aubrey, Aubrey's time and everything else. And I. I know the the reason that went in there is there was a lot of um, angst in the past about. Houses being torn down and replaced by much larger houses. And a a big part of why that went into ordinance to have this demolition permit. Was so there was a delay. People wouldn't just see a house just all of a sudden disappear in the next day. There would at least be a month where it had to go to. Council and be recognized and voted on. So. Not saying that that wouldn't be important to continue, but there is that legitimate administrative time for it. So I think it does make sense to move up from zero on this.
I think Barb and I'm, I'm going to kind of try and corral this. Councilmember Bennett said two twenty five in the chat, touching upon Councilmember Puskowski's comment about administrative costs. Barb and I can tell you from having to deal with tree protection for the demolition of Yandell, which excellent timing, giving us some great feedback. There is plenty of time. I don't think many other properties are quite as. We're going to say lushly overgrown as Yandell, but there is some time to make sure that we don't accidentally take out a beloved town tree. So.
It's two twenty five acceptable?
Yeah, it would be the only odd number, though. I wonder if like two hundred is fine or.
There we go, two hundred.
Okay.
Number the driveway parking pad is always one twenty five.
One fifty. Two twenty five will work for me then.
So I'm hearing two twenty five for a standalone demolition permit. This is the part where I ask you, do you want to offer a discount to residents if they also apply for a residential? Construction permit at the same time? Or do we want to say, you know what, the dollar fees are reasonable? We're not going to discount it.
Is there less work being, is there less work being done um, if somebody is doing both demolition and building something new?
I wouldn't say there's a significant decrease in administrative costs. I would say maybe you save an hour. Because you know what their tree protection is for the demolition and you can tell them just keep doing your tree protection for the construction. But I can't guarantee that. Barb, did you have thoughts on?
I don't think there would be really any meaningful um, reduction in time.
Tracking the difference would be costly, right? I mean, that would take a little time.
Yeah.
As as opposed to one size fits all, which is easier.
It might be moving the driveway to a different side or something else.
Okay, so.
Discount for.
It would be like six hundred plus two twenty five if you're going to tear down a house.
And build a new one and that would still clock you in at eight hundred and twenty five dollars if my math is correct, which. Seems pretty reasonable in Garrett Park neighborly.
Yeah.
Barbie, if you could hit the next slide, please. Herb cuts. Didn't really talk about these before, but they're getting their day in the sun right now. We currently do not charge a fee for them, but. We did recommend a hundred and forty dollars. This got lost in the shuffle of other bigger ticket items. We are expecting about an hour of the arborist's time. Um, so external cost would be at seventy five, fifty percent of the external cost would be thirty seven fifty. Councilmember Bennett, just to make sure that we get your thoughts. Where do you think is reasonable for this permit fee to go? Councilmember Bennett, you had a bit of an echo, but I think I heard you say seventy five. Okay, seventy five is what was said by Councilmember Bennett. Councilmember Schulp.
Well, so I'm about to run monkey wrench into the works here for a moment. Um, I believe under some ordinance. Of which number I forget. One will find that the town is required to provide a driveway apron, which I would. May also imply that curb cut would come with it. Um, I may be wrong, but I recall that we had talked about it once a while ago.
So I'm going to interject my understanding in terms of the driveway apron is that the town. Can reimburse up to a reasonable dollar figure for someone who did a driveway apron. I would have to kick it over to town manager Matthews. She's read the ordinance more recently than I have.
That's correct. Um, we currently have what is a very unusual provision that we will reimburse a resident for a driveway apron. Um, it specifies four feet back from essentially the street. Um, that ordinance also talks about, as Kayla alluded to, reimbursement at a a reasonable rate.
And you're correct.
It it actually, the code actually says that the council has adopted. Amounts, which of course we have not done. Um, we are currently dealing with um. Uh, a matter that falls under this provision in talking to Mr. Azar. Um, what he recommended, you know, absent any other information provided by the resident would be that we would look at the standard. That is used by the Montgomery County Department of Permitting Services for bonding purposes.
And what is that? How much is that?
Uh, it's a, I believe it's a thousand dollars and that is that, I'm going off memory here. It's a thousand dollars. Um, for a driveway apron that assumes that there is a. Um, culvert pipe that is installed as part of the apron. Um, there is a separate county standard. Um, for actually like removing a driveway. So obviously an apron is only part of a driveway. Um, I would just mention in passing, I don't want to belabor at this point, but. Um, this has been a provision I've talked to the town engineer and the mayor about quite a bit. Um, there are no standards in the code under which. Someone can replace their apron. There is no provision to say how often it can happen. Um, so if if this is a provision, um, it's a discussion for another day that you all choose to keep. Um, I have kicked around some language with Mr. Azar. I think it needs to be much more refined. The language needs to be much more refined and specific than it exists today.
Should we add this to the list of things to 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 put the future of of perhaps a permit for driveway aprons to make sure that. It's going through the process and 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 you know that that it's.
So you'd want a separate permit from the existing driveway parking pad permit?
For aprons?
For aprons. That's what I'm trying to make sure that I, are we separating out the apples from the oranges?
No, what I took the mayor's comment to mean is that this is an issue for us to look at at a future date. Is that what?
Okay.
Because I want to make sure that because just like with curb cuts and and and. What's allowed and not allowed and what we. It's a little muddled in my mind, but I want us to, we want to make sure that we come back to that at some future point, but. Um, is there, so Phil, you were saying that there. Is a concern because of the ordinance or there's not, or you're just throwing out here something we need to.
No, I, my concern is that I guess we would charge somebody for the curb cut and then reimburse them for the apron.
That's how it is now, but we should still charge them for the curb cut, right? Because that's what we're.
It's a permit.
Permit, yes.
Permit. But then we're going to charge them for a curb cut. And yet we're going to reimburse them for the aprons and.
So you're worried that they would just basically have their check come in and then sent back out?
We should put the the apron on a very proximate future meeting, right? Unless we all want to get aprons and all of our neighbors do and then we go bankrupt.
But if the purpose of having the permit fee is. To pay for the arborist's time, then I wouldn't mind, even if we end up reimbursing them for. Work being done. At least we're guaranteeing that we're paying for. So I mean, it is kind of a little bit of a shell game, but I don't think that's.
This one does also have, similar to buildings, it has a pretty important part that's not paid, but um. A lot of times either George Martin, and I think sometimes George Miller does it too, like to go to look at where the curb cut might be. To make sure it's not going to have a negative stormwater um. Effect from it, because it could be opening up space for water to spill off the side of the street and across um, elsewhere.
That's a related issue, definitely, right? But is, but is it, it does.
Folks, can we hold for one second while I pull up Councilmember Bennett's comments and Mayor Welch will ask you to read them.
Leave in the text.
Let's see, Councilmember Bennett says, it isn't clear to me why the difference between a driveway and curb cut would be. What's the difference between a driveway and a curb cut?
I think we're not, we're not permitting driveways on the curb cuts, right? And.
Well, the parking pad was a previous one. The curb cut just gets you through through the curb.
And joining the town.
Yeah, turning, adjoining town right away.
So the immediate question, the curb cut, what do we want to do?
Well, okay, so I think the. Before we tackle the immediate, we need the bigger picture question is we've got issues with driveways, curb cuts, aprons. That we need to look at separately. Then the immediate thing is. Can we start to solve it just by looking at the permit and getting that?
Or can we solve the part that's before us tonight and then move on and do the rest? But but definitely move on and do it.
So Councilmember Bennett threw a comment in the chat of can't we combine two? So councilmember Bennett threw a comment in the chat of can't we combine to one type?
Which would be the application for the. Head.
Driveway, parking pad, curb cut?
Yes.
So.
One or the other.
Do they come at the same time necessarily?
Sometimes, but not always. So you might be be changing the things that are beyond a curb cut you're not touching. But it could be both together. So it could either be like we had one twenty-five for driveway parking pad. It could be like one twenty-five plus seventy-five if you're doing both. Or just say this, if you're doing one or the other, it's the same.
So just make sure I have that clear.
So we we set one hundred and twenty-five.
Hold on, hold on. So seventy-five dollars is where we're currently hovering at when we're having this hypothetical conversation about curb cuts. My understanding councilmember Puskowski is we do one twenty-five plus seventy-five if I'm say applying to install a parking pad. And I would like to shift the way I enter my property. Three feet to the right so that I don't look out my living room window and see. Cars coming in.
Isn't, isn't that more complicated than what we need right now, which is simply perhaps to either leave it at one twenty-five for the pad? And seventy-five for the curb cut. Because as Steve said, sometimes they go together and sometimes they don't.
I mean.
Isn't it just easier?
We can try and consolidate it. Councilmember Bennett was in favor of consolidating in the chat. What I would maybe suggest at this point is. We go with a consolidation of the permits for curb cut driveway apron. What have you hold it at the permit fee that council agreed upon for driveway parking pads, which is one twenty-five. And at a future agenda item where we discuss the apron provision and the ordinance. That can have a conversation of do we wish to see it truly split out into? Each part, or are we happy to keep it as one? Permit. Okay, the other option is that we just choose not to act upon it tonight. We currently don't charge a fee for it. Council does have the option to say we are going to continue for this particular permit. To not charge a fee until we sort out other options.
What do you think, Steve?
Uh, I I feel like it would be fine to just say like driving, parking or curb cut, like any of those. Any of those three could be one fee, cause I think even if you are gonna shift the location of it, it's still one arborist trip to look at. Both where it gets on the property and where it crosses the trees.
So I've heard from councilmember Bennett and councilmember Puskowski about combining it into one permit. Councilmember Schulp.
Agreed, one permit.
What is the cost of the one?
The cost of the one is one twenty-five.
For, and now they get both for that price. Sure.
Or over one.
Or one, one or both.
Yeah.
For the same one twenty-five.
Yeah. All right, keeps it kind of simple and it's again, unless I'm missing something, I think it's still the same arborist trip.
It's the same work being done, the same review, the same. Reporting. And, okay, so we're getting rid of curb cut.
It's getting bundled into.
Okay, so it's not just driveway parking pad, it's driveway parking pad.
Curb cut.
And or curb cut.
And Barb, if we could move to the next slide. All right, street closure. We currently don't charge a dollar fee for that. Council's direction on May eighth was a fifteen percent increase to all permits. That have no external billable costs associated with them. I may not have paid much attention in certain parts of my math class, but it was pretty clear to me. You can't multiply zero and get anything other than zero. So. Throwing out as potential options and partially covered by our Zoom chat. Which I will move in a moment. I am proposing five dollars per day of closure for community events. That's your block parties. That's your festivals. If attic in the street happens, what have you. That is something where all of your neighbors are welcome to show up and attend, have fun. The fifty dollars is for closures such as potentially moving or having contractors who have to shut down a portion of the road in order to bring in supplies. Obviously, these are recommendations.
Let's see, councilmember Bennett says, I like this to be town hall. Oh, gosh.
Being free for community events. So my understanding of councilmember Bennett's position is she would not like to see any dollar cost associated with. Street closures for community events. Councilmember Bennett. Would you want to see a closure cost if it was, say, a neighbor shutting down the street to bring in moving trucks or contractors?
Can they do that?
Okay, yes.
I agree that the closure for community events is five dollars more trouble than it's worth. I mean. It generates more cost administratively than it than it collects.
Okay, so it sounds like we are getting at least two councilmembers who say no charge for community events. You just have to do the paperwork. So that town office staff knows what to tell county EMS. We don't have a fire truck go screaming through someone's nice little street. Party. Um, councilmember Schulp and or Puskowski, how do you feel about fifty dollars for someone closing down a street? For something like a mover or a contractor bringing in material?
I don't know. Do we ever have that happen?
We haven't had any recently. This is something that could. Pretty easily happen when you look at some of the potential, like building a new residence. And or doing a demolition, if you have to bring in heavy equipment, that can be.
Or taking trees down. We have to bring the green.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where you go. Yeah, I think, fine, maybe fifty is not enough if it's something like that.
Is there a dollar figure that you think would be more appropriate than fifty? Because please recall that is fifty dollars per day of closure. So if you have a contractor who says I'm gonna have three days where I need to shut down. A portion of Keswick to get in heavy equipment, that would total out to one fifty.
Yeah, I think the burden is bigger on that. On the residents for that, like if it's gonna be the three days, I wonder if there shouldn't be something like you could get a certain hours of window. Although the other challenge with that is. Various crews from around the county have come to do work. And it seems like somehow they magically plan it to be the peak time going in and out of school and they'll do work on that block. So and that's not sure even if like any of them are even gonna know or care or recognize that we have a permit.
Or if you double the cost each successive day, you can dissuade.
But if they're not even paying attention to the fact that a fee is required and sometimes it's town contracted.
And get more law enforcement too.
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead, Kayla.
So just to make sure I'm fully following and capturing. We would potentially like to see a higher fee. Per day of closure because of the inconvenience to the neighbors for when someone shuts down a street. We have concerns about people being aware of it. Um, I do want to kind of highlight. There's a difference between, let's say, something like WSSC. Where they are currently over right where our guile goes up around the bend. Um, and will have to come back and have been in communication. Do we want to do a carve out for? If it is something kind of as an emergency or semi urgent repair, we don't require it, but if it is a planned. Part of your. Building a new home or demolition of an existing property. If there is any possibility of you shutting down a street, you have to. Do the street closure permit at the same time and try and capture it that way so that people become aware.
I would think that's fair because town office is probably gonna need to notify all the people on the block that they're expecting to do this, right? So they can get their cars out or.
They generally would have to be noticed whether it comes from the property owner who's applying for the permit or whether it comes from town office. I've seen it done either way. My general preference, as much as it creates more work for me, is to have the town office do it because we are generally. Much more on top of. Making sure the neighbors know and we do have access to both GPML and the forum. The other big thing that I do want to make sure and part of what brought up this idea of a street closure permit with a fee is. We are expected, and this was hammered into me by a Maryland firefighter over in Anarundel County. You need to tell your EMS if you're shutting down a street, because if they don't know, it is potentially delaying life saving care. So.
Okay.
So let's do our little auction.
Before you do that question, what do you define as a day?
I would define a day as. Let's say, starting at seven AM. I don't know any movers who would come earlier than that when I was moving down here from Pennsylvania to join you lovely folks. My mover said the earliest we can get to you is nine AM because we have crews coming in from like a fifty mile radius.
Yeah.
So would you like to specify that here and now of a day counts as?
Any portion of.
A calendar day.
Any portion of a calendar day. Yeah, because if we don't do that, then they'll, then they.
Then they'll.
Then they'll say, oh, it wasn't a day. I mean, you know.
It's an hour, it's a portion.
Anything I would see.
Yeah.
Any portion of a.
If you are shutting our road, you need to do the paperwork and you need to.
And they need to give. How many weeks notice or how many days notice? I I guess, would that be part of the permit? Maybe that's a rabbit hole. We don't need to do it.
I think that would be a bit of a rabbit hole. I think that's something that staff could maybe look at our neighbors to see what do they consider reasonable notice? And do we need to give an exception for, okay? There's a difference between, oh, someone's house caught on fire and we have to do kind of a rapid demolition. You can't give us two weeks notice. Because well, you gotta take it down now before it falls down on the neighbors. But we can argue that in staff and update paperwork appropriately. Dollar figure per day, please.
Fifty.
Councilmember Bennett, how do you feel about fifty?
That seems reasonable.
Okay, I have two fifties. I see a thumbs up from councilmember Puskowski. I see a thumbs up from councilmember Eisenstadt. We are going to go to. Fifty dollars for anything like contractors moving heavy equipment. But we are not going to charge if you shut down the street because you want to party with your neighbors.
No, but just just on that last thing, assuming there's a dollar or zero dollar fee for closing down for a community event, the town office, I assume would still. By the block and.
Yeah, we'd still want someone to do some paperwork and tell us, hey. On July nineteenth, we are gonna shut down Oxford to party with our neighbors. Town office, can you please tell the county so no one gets run over by the ambulance?
But I guess my question is, is it the responsibility organizer to check sure, make sure everybody on the block is good with that? Or would the town office be sending?
I will say my preference is to say your responsibility, if Stephen, you're the one organizing party. Your responsibility is to tell town office on the paperwork, in which case I will take it and I will send out the targeted email blast. So I will make the phone calls or I will print off the neon colored flyers and tape them to People Store and go, hey, guess what? Your neighbors are throwing a block party. Be aware that you are going to have no access to Oxford Street at this time. I know you don't actually live on Oxford. But it's where I've been for my example. So I think we are good on that.
Organizer set that up. Okay.
Yeah, the organizers just need to make town office aware. We'll take it from there. Next, actually Barb's on the right side, accessory buildings, which. Really currently has a formula that. Quite frankly, drives me a little batty, but the current fee formula calls for fifty cents per square foot with a minimum of twenty-five dollars and a maximum of two hundred and fifty dollars. A fifteen percent adjustment would see a rate of fifty-seven and a half cents per square foot. Which would result in a minimum of twenty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents and a maximum of two hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Is an accessory building inherently a separate structure, not?
So it can be a shed, it could be an ADU, it could be.
But not an ADU in the sense of like I'm converting my basement into an ADU.
No, but like if you decide you want to put a tiny home in your backyard because your college graduate child. Is having like a hippie moment and doesn't know what they want to do. I'm throwing out hypotheticals. I don't know your family dynamics. Frankly, it's none of my business. It's more of just accessory building. In the standard definition is not connected to the primary building on the lot, which for Garrett Park is the residence.
I mean, shouldn't this be sort of discussed in terms of either being an addition or a new residential? Rather than having it be this way or.
Well, then that brings back the shed argument of if I want to put a really nice shed on the property. Big enough that I can, you know, transfer plants into standalone terracotta pots each season. And have my gardening shears all nicely lined up on the wall. That's not attached to the building. That's very clearly not something I'm living in. Cause I'm not putting in heating or cooling or running water. But it is a standalone.
Yeah, it's a different category.
Wonder if like a conditioned space is different, like an unconditioned garage is maybe less than a conditioned, like an accessory dwelling unit. But both of those are more than say like a garden shed, which is smaller. Like even a a garden shed, you don't require a county permit unless it's over a hundred square feet, kind of like the floor.
I would just say go for one because those are good questions, but if we require an inspector to ask them, that's more time. And you're very quickly going to eat up the two hundred and eighty-seven, even which is even the maximum. So I would go for the fifty percent adjustment and just. Call it a day on that one.
Yeah, but I think this begs the more important question. Accessory building. What is the definition? For instance, an ADU could be an accessory building, a tiny house, as was mentioned earlier. Versus say something you can't live in. To me, it would be something that one would not normally live in, such as a garage shed. Potting shed.
So is that something you would like us to explicitly spell out on the permit of if you are applying under this category? You are applying with the knowledge that at no point will you be living. In this facility. Is that something that would allow you to continue to keep kind of?
That's what I would suggest because it's totally different kettle of fish.
Councilmember Bennett, how do you feel about having that call out? I see a raised hand.
Yeah, I was just wondering, so I I I agree with where Phil's going with this, but are we then saying that we should have a separate category for an ADU permit?
I think my understanding from the conversation today is that an ADU would fall under kind of the new residential. Even if it's a tiny home, it would still.
That's what I would think.
So yeah, it is almost.
Okay, that makes sense to me. I'm fine with that.
Although one possible other thing is you could lump it in with building additions or where we had that at three hundred dollars. You could say building additions or. Accessory dwelling. So it's three hundred instead of six hundred.
How do we, councilmember Eisenstadt, how do you feel about capturing ADUs as building additions rather than new residential?
Uh, that sounds good.
Councilmember Bennett?
I guess I'm okay with that.
Okay, so just to make sure my notes are clear, we are going to keep the accessory building at a fifteen percent. Increase to the standard fee formula. We are going to specify that accessory buildings are not to be lived in. That if they are facilities that someone's going to live in, they should either be applied for as. Building additions in the case of an ADU. Or as new residential in the case of, let's say, a tiny home or a truly new full-size standalone family home. Does that?
Sounds good.
Satisfy everyone?
Okay, but yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just wanted to just, I'm sorry, so I, but an ADU would be a stand. If we consider to stand alone ADU to be in a quote unquote addition, which is where I think this was going. Then. We would say a tiny home would still be an ADU in that respect.
I think it's.
Yes, I think Phil's right about that.
I think where I got lost and I think where we're having some confusion is we weren't specifying standalone. So let me try and. Make sure that I'm capturing this clearly. And. So. If it's not something you're living in and it's not attached to the primary residence on the home. It is an accessory building. That's your sheds, that's your garages. We have that formula nailed down. If it is something that you are living in that is attached to the primary home, whether that be adding. A home office or. An in-law suite or whatever we want to call it, so that someone can live in it. We would consider that a building addition. And if it is. A physically unconnected residence. That would be applied for as a new residential. Is that a correct understanding?
The last might violate zoning, right?
You can, you can do them by right, but it still has to be reviewed the same way. And there's a limit on how big it can be. So in the town, you'd still have your. Twenty percent max lot coverage, but then the county also has regulations and how big the max of that. They call a DDU, like a detached accessory dwelling unit. So. I think we're covered there, but I guess it would be just be the question is. Do we consider that to be more akin to a new second dwelling on the full second new dwelling on the property? Or is should it be a discount slash incentive that it's not like a full big new house? It's like a smaller house. So I don't know, I I I feel like either is valid.
I'm gonna, sorry.
I'm sorry, I was gonna say personally, I think that it should be considered a separate new residence because you're gonna go through all the same stuff, sewer, water, electric, gas. We're still using gas. You know, those sorts of things. It's just that it's gonna be on a smaller scale than than the primary residence.
You know, we don't review the sewer, but like, um, things like that, the county does, but to your point, we'd have to review for parking. And to make sure that there's parking and so on. To meet the regulations. So yeah, it would make more sense be, it's more like a new house.
In like use.
Even if, even if it's a, for all ADUs, even if, oh, I'm sorry, so for any.
Only detached.
Detached ADUs.
Yeah, so if you do your basement, you wouldn't even need a permit from Garrett Park at all. If you do an addition on your house to add two rooms.
Yes.
Then you would be a building addition like that, whether it's, that's what Kayla was saying, regardless whether it's an office or a dwelling, you'd still be required to do the. Garrett Park review for the change in the lot coverage.
Except that ADUs also have. Except that ADUs also have parking requirements. And in that sense, it's a little bit more than just a building addition on ADU.
So, so it sounds like what we're doing here is going back to the issue of the new constructions and making it and or ADU as uh separate freestanding ADU. And then the addition is for the adjoining ADU, right?
Which I think is saying that it could be that the, even if you're doing an addition on your house.
As an ADU.
Making it an apartment. They still have to review the um like the parking, added parking requirements, which you wouldn't have to do for.
Okay.
Although actually, you know what? You do have to for the new residential because that's one of the things that Land Use Advisory Committee has been talking about with um future for a DDU laws. There is already something on the books requiring two spaces for a new residence.
Okay, so.
So they are.
So accessory dwelling unit, whether, whether detached or attached, should that be under new residential because of the parking requirements? Because of the parking.
Probably, yeah, because it would make your, unless it changes in the future, it would make your requirement go from two minimum to four minimum. Unless the town provides relief on that.
So for just this one that we're working on right now, we can basically say accessory billing is defined as something that you don't do now, plan on living in ever.
And is not attached.
And is not attached.
And so, but if we do the fifteen percent increase, are we keeping this whole like formula or are we gonna have flat rates?
No.
If we do the fifteen percent increase, it would be keeping the formula that's based on square footage.
Okay.
So we're gonna.
Want to keep this, the, the, the formula? Or can we go to, since we've sort of defined uh accessory building as being not livable and not attached, it's still, there's still limitations on how big it can be because of um far, right?
Right.
And so I mean.
Lock coverages, yeah.
And lock coverage, I mean.
Well, and I remember I dealt with this thing back long, long ago when I first joined the council. And so my reason I had proposed the fifty cents a square foot or whatever a square foot was that you don't charge the same for somebody's garage as you would for somebody putting up a potting shed that's only eight foot square.
Yeah, because we, we still have the same land use check regardless of whether or not the, the county has to permit it or not. So.
So you're saying go to a flat rate?
So I'm just. A modest flat rate? Yeah, like, I don't know, split the difference, a hundred and fifty dollars, something like that. That way it's less.
Excessive for a shed.
For a shed that's excessive, that's.
All right, for a garage, it's not, but I guess that's.
Well, a stoop is seventy five.
All right. But a hundred? I mean, I guess, yeah, a shed, you're right.
That's still for garage. So I think the formula.
This formula is good.
Would work and we make it sixty cents per square foot, just to keep the math even, which.
Just inflated.
And then we just make it thirty dollars and three hundred dollars for the, the upper number, lower and upper numbers respectively. And that's.
So sixty, sixty cents.
That works for me.
Okay, that sounded pretty near unanimous. So thank you, Councilmember Schultz, for getting us.
Do we need to address this whole ADU thing about where, what category it falls under?
No, my understanding from the existing conversation is that it would be handled under new residential.
If it's a standalone, if it's.
I think the conversation about the parking spots led to a realization that no matter whether it be standalone or an in-law suite built on, it could potentially alter the number of parking spots per lot that are needed to be compliant. So I think no matter what we do, it sounded like council was at, it needs to be handled under new residential, even if it is attached onto the existing primary home on the residence.
Do we all agree with that?
I, I do. I might guess some maybe residential is the term that throws it off. Maybe it's a new dwelling because it could be the first dwelling or the second dwelling.
So it's another six hundred dollars.
Yeah, if I can interject one moment because I just processed a permit within the last couple of months for an accessory building. That was basically a treehouse. Um, so I think as you think about these, um, they're not just on the ground, they can be in the air.
All right. That sounds good though. What you said sounds fine.
Okay, I am going to ask us to move on to the next slide because guys, the end line is in sight. So we are really quick recapping at the May eighth meeting. It was a request made of staff that we come back with some potential new permits. It was inspired in part by the conversation where we had the overall discussion that there are permits required by other communities that Garrett Park doesn't currently require. These do not currently exist. Any dollar figures you see with them are suggestions and it is overall a suggestion to even create and require these permits. With that being said, we use the logic of nominal fee if we couldn't find any external costs. Again, because there's no existing fee, we can't do our fifteen percent multiplier. Fifteen percent of zero is still zero. We have three potential permits that we will touch on. Swimming pool permit, solar panel permit and fence permit. Barb, if we could go to the next slide. Swimming pool is broken out in part because we could estimate some external costs for that. We are estimating three hours of the town arborist, which would result in a total external cost of two hundred twenty five dollars. Or if we only charge fifty percent of that, one hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. My question to council, before we go into some convoluted fee conversation is, do you want to require a swimming pool permit? Councilmember Bennett? Would you like to require?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Schultz, would you like to require a swimming pool? Councilmember Puskowski?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so there is unanimous agreement that we would like to see a swimming pool permit created. Councilmember Bennett, I did see in the chat that you wanted the two hundred and twenty five dollar fee.
Third, fourth.
Okay, that is the quickest I think we have touched on any one permit. We will work on getting that created. Next slide, please, Barb. Okay, these next two are a little bit different and that's why they are broken out from the swimming pool. Currently, we do not require I say swimming pool and that should not say swimming pool, that should say solar panels. My apologies for not catching that error. I was too busy doing math to pay attention to what I was referring to on this final side. But for solar panels and fences, we don't currently require a town permit, but there must be a document that originates from the town office indicating that we have no specific requirements in order from Montgomery County to issue the county solar panel or fence permit. Because there's no existing permit and because we don't charge for that, it's thrown out as a twenty five dollar fee. I believe Councilmember Max, in her comments, said Town Manager Matthews before the meeting indicated that she didn't see a need to charge for it and that she thought just having letters generated was sufficient. So I will ask Councilmember Eisenstadt.
Yeah, I mean, the cost again, twenty five dollars is, you're collecting less than the cost of generating the permit, so it makes no sense. So we either have to increase it or not have it.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, it costs more than twenty five dollars to collect a twenty five dollar fee, right? When you think about the work and the processing and, I mean, it just doesn't make any sense.
So I'm hearing, don't charge for it, just continue to issue letters. Councilmember Bennett, thoughts?
I don't see a problem with just charging twenty five.
Okay, Councilmember Schultz?
Agreed, charge twenty five.
Councilmember Puskowski?
Yeah, similar, I think twenty five is fine. It's just so it's recognized and kind of done, recorded.
Okay, I am hearing on a three to one basis, charge the twenty five dollars for solar panel and fence letters. Before we move on, I am going to run through what we just covered.
I didn't realize we were doing solar and fence. I thought it was just solar, but um question or comment about the the fence, I think that's similar to driveways where almost all of them are happening without a permit. So I guess the nominal fee helps on that, but is there? Maybe it's just a different topic for a different time. Is there any way to get um?
Higher profile.
Yeah, just more friendly review of fences. Um, because they, they can be problematic if people put them in the wrong spot. And um I remember one that was built where it took like ten people pointing out that it was off the property before it finally got.
I.
Yeah, I can think of one.
That's less associated with having a fee for it and more with education and outreach. And given that these would be new charges for the fence, um and what have you, I think we could maybe look at doing some informational blasts over the summer and maybe include it as kind of a cheat sheet. So you want to do something to your house in Garrett Park and just kind of give some sort of document to residents or make it available on the website that says, if you want to do X, here's what you have to apply for, please be mindful of property lines. I think we have some options for how we approach it. I don't think we have to tie it to the fee. Um, I would like to really quick recap everything we did, just that we can make sure we're all on the same page.
And then can we vote?
Yes, I'm gonna recap it, then you guys are all going to do a lovely little vote where hopefully it's quick and painless because you already hashed out the discussion. And then we'll move on to whatever is next on the agenda. So we have now five hundred dollars for a variance. We then said six hundred dollars for new residential.
Including ADUs?
Including ADUs. We said.
No.
All, all ADUs. We are not differentiating if the ADU is freestanding. It's all good. We will clarify that in a minute.
Okay.
We are saying for building additions, a flat fee of three hundred dollars. For driveway, parking pad, and we are now including curb cuts in this permit, we are saying one hundred and twenty five. For decks and porches, which have been separated out for stoops, we are saying one fifty. And for our stoop that is now standing proudly alone, you are seventy five dollars. For demolition, we are saying two hundred and twenty five dollars. There is no discount if you also apply for a building permit. For um, street closures, we are not charging you if you are doing a community event, but we are still requiring you to fill out the paperwork. If you are closing the street because you have movers or contractors or similar coming in, it is fifty dollars per day.
For any portion of a day.
For any portion of a calendar day. For accessory buildings, these are things like your sheds, your garages. We upped the formula to say sixty cents per square foot with a minimum of thirty dollars and a maximum of three hundred. We are saying for a swimming pool, you are now going to have to get a Garrett Park permit for that and it will cost you two hundred and twenty five dollars based on our estimates of town arborist review. And we are saying if you need to get an authorization letter from the town office for solar panels and or for fences, either of those will cost you twenty five dollars. Can I please hear voting from council?
So I make a motion that we uh.
A motion to approve the uh.
Prove the feast.
The town permit fee.
Second.
Yep, third.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you all very much for your patience as we went through that. I know it was a lot of math and a lot of permits.
You did very, very, very well, Kayla. My one question is, um, are we going to alert the county so that they will kick it back to us? For example, with solar panel, county has a permit, we will notify them so that they say, hey, make sure you get Garrett Park permit first.
They already do that. Um.
They will kick people out of their offices.
They will kick people out of their process for offense for um solar panels. Um, I do want to remind everyone that you just did a vote. This will come back before you at your next meeting um as a formal fee resolution. Um, so I think it was helpful to have the vote just to make sure we had it right, but this will be actual legislation that will be coming before you.
So look for the pretty document that doesn't have a bunch of scribbled notes at a meeting coming to you in the near future.
Right, and it would also include the parking fines, um, you know, and traffic related fines, as we talked about before. Those need, those have not been properly constituted based on my discussion with the town attorney.
Thanks for doing this. This is um long overdue, I feel like. It's good to have it updated.
Work, Kayla. Um, okay, wow, that was a really long discussion. Um, it is now nine thirty four and we are moving on to new business. Um, let's start with the uh uh, Councilmember Schultz requested we discuss uh fire lane on Keswick.
So we've noticed both during swimming pool um, event operations such as meets uh or parties, large parties or similar, um, people parking in areas which are defined is no parking, but not defined as a fire lane. Uh, the reason I'm bringing it up as a fire lane is because a couple of weeks ago, some neighbors had a party. And when they did, they parked on both sides of the street and basically you could not get a fire truck or similar emergency vehicle down the street. So to me, that would make it a fire lane. And we've also declared areas uh up to Raleigh on the other side of the street uh to be a fire lane. So the thought was that we would continue that and make it a fire lane. It tends to get people's attention and they don't park there. We don't even have to worry about it too much during many of the meets. Um, and if we do, we say that the, there's an announcement made that you're parked in a fire lane. It's a two hundred and fifty dollar fine. And they usually promptly move their cars. Otherwise, people have been known to ignore just regular, no parking signs.
Councilman, I mean, um, Manager Matthews, you and I discussed this and I'm gonna have to say it. I don't remember what we said, but I do remember that you had something important that you needed to impart about this.
Um, I, I don't know what the practice has been in Garrett Park, but typically when I've seen areas either designated as handicap parking, fire lanes, that's normally done. Um, in most jurisdictions I have worked in, it's actually codified um in some manner or it's adopted formally um outside more of a vote. Um, I have not discussed this with the town attorney, Mayor Welch, so I'd have to get his thoughts, but if you flip through a lot of municipal codes, you'll actually see um, kind of appendices that actually list every area of handicap parking, um, stop signs are formally put in, fire lanes certainly are put in, especially if there's an associated fine. So I'll, I'll just need to check on the, the process with the town attorney, just to make sure we um formally constitute either existing fire lanes or whatever your direction is on this issue. Just want to make sure we don't make the same mistake that we did with the parking related fines.
Certainly. So what we could do then is um I could give you the formal description of what it is and I guess you check with the town attorney, then something could be drafted up for say the July.
Well, but should this be limited to this one area? Or I mean, if this, if this is an ordinance that where we're sort of declaring these are the fire lanes in town, these are the handicapped spots in town. Should this be done more holistically um and, and, and assessed more than just this is a problem that I noticed today or last week, or I just am not.
Um, I, I think it's certainly worth looking at the different areas in town, Mayor Welch, and figuring out how those were constituted. Um, and Councilmember Schultz, you might be able to help me here since you have the most tenure of anyone. I think the problem with many of the parking fines is that that responsibility, as I went back through um the history, was delegated to then town manager, um.
Swearing.
Swearing.
Yeah, Jane Swearingen. Sorry, I was throwing a blank on his last name all of a sudden. Um, and that was an improper delegation. Um, I, I need to check with the town attorney as to whether or not you all taking formal action in a meeting in and of itself is sufficient. Um, as I said, I think a lot of places just kind of aggregate everything, just like a fee resolution. Um, so I can check on that. I, I agree with Councilmember Schultz's comments that I, I think you all at least can talk about this issue tonight. Um, certainly, I think the proximity of the swimming pool does add a a layer of um traffic and parking requirements that don't exist in other areas of town. But certainly we have a number of areas where parking on both sides of the street would be problematic for emergency vehicle access.
Uh, on the other side of Keswick, during the school season, the same thing happens, which is cars on both sides of the streets. But I mean, I wouldn't necessarily want to just try to have it declared a fire lane unless it meets the criteria. I mean, it may, I mean, maybe there isn't a criterion, but.
Yeah.
I mean, we should, we should figure out, I think I agree more holistically with what those should be and then we should see community wide, which areas meet, meet the standard. Wouldn't that be a better way?
Well, we've got some defined already as do with uh, as we do with um handicap spaces. And um with the pool season being somewhat short, I'm looking at trying, and the swim sea meat season being somewhat short, I'm looking to try and move this forward. Um I would think that we could at least inventory what we have in terms of handicap spots and so on and so forth.
Do that.
And we could you, we could do that, add this particular spot and then if anything comes up in the next month or so, we could address those two and then just get what we've got, then we can look at the traffic survey and other stuff to fix. Get what we've got, then we can look at the traffic survey and other stuff to figure out if we want to add anymore.
I don't know, I'm, I'm hesitant because, um, I, I just, I don't. I don't want to do, do this halfway just because it's a current, like immediate. I, I don't know, I just, I just. I remember several years ago when we put in stop signs on Oxford. And I don't remember that we asked anybody that we did any study of that, that we just said, we think there should be one here and we should put it here. And I think there's been a history of just, I think we should put something here. There was even, I read this in the pupil. Uh, when they got rid of a stop sign at the top of our guy or panel where they're like, well, we'll get rid of the stop sign, but let's put a sign that says. If you're not going to stop, could you at least, at least slow down? I'm like, seriously? I just think that we need to be a little bit more methodical and not just. Uh, I don't, I don't know. Do we, do we hire somebody during? Trap during swim meets, I like a traffic person to like keep people out. I mean, I just don't want to be reactionary about this. I want this to be thoughtfully. Uh, considered.
We, we do do it already with the swimming. There's usually somebody volunteers or two people that volunteer to. Go cover the lot and the street and direct people to park or not park where they go, I guess, um. We did. Doesn't mean that it can't happen.
I mean, the first thing, first thing this year was caused by a neighbor having a party. And that was what started the whole thing and somebody had finally called the police, which caused them to eventually move, move everything. Um, I think we could certainly look up to see what the definition of the fire lane is to see. What we can do, I'm just concerned that we do something to make sure that we've got the ability to. For some type of enforcement and that, um, we don't clog things up, so.
So if it were a fire lane, who enforces that?
Um, if I can add, not to add to the complexity, but, um, a number of years ago. The town partially adopted chapter thirty-one of the county code and subsequently entered into. Um, and then I'm trying to think what it was called. It was essentially a administration agreement with Montgomery County. I, in going through some records, I could not, I found like half a dozen copies of an unsigned enforcement agreement. Um, reached out to the county to try to see if I could get a fully executed copy and that basically prompted. Um, the county, this is fairly recent, telling me that, um, they're not sure they actually can help with enforcement unless we fully adopted chapter thirty-one. And so I have a call with, um. An attorney account, one, someone in the county attorney's office and someone in Montgomery County Department of Transportation next Wednesday, as a matter of fact, to talk specifically about what that. The adoption of chapter thirty-one means and what this, um, administration agreement means, because it, it appears that we may have something in place that actually is unenforceable.
So would that be enforcement of what kind of things, just everything?
Um, there appear to have been an agreement, um, as best as I can tell from the records, as I said, there's a lot. Um, Ron Bolt was actually very helpful in this as well, as well as the county attorney's office. Um, I think it was to basically give the county the right to enforce certain, um, like parking violations such as a fire lane. Um, violations of, you know, any kind of handicap parking. I believe that was the intent, but now in discussions with the county. It appears once again that we may have, um, an issue with how this was all constituted. I don't know anything beyond that pending. My call with them next Wednesday. Up next week.
But that documentation you're talking about, is that from maybe five-ish years ago?
That sounds about right, Stephen. Yeah.
My recollection is there was a, um, maybe right even. Even right up before the pandemic, there was a attempt to hire like a parking enforcement person, and I think the, um, the. The way that was proposed by the mayor at the time was that there was, there would be a way that the county, like Garrett Park would be able to hire somebody to do the ticket, but then. There was no Garrett Park Court to go to, to contest it, so it would go to the county court to, and then they would keep the proceeds.
I believe that's, that sounds about right because I, I did find in the files and in talking to Andrea. Just as you noted, I think there, um, the town was very close to hiring someone and then when the pandemic hit, there really wasn't a need to, so.
There's even a line in our, in the budget, eleven point two point three.
Exactly. Tried to follow that through. As I stated, I could not find a fully executed copy of the agreement. That seemed to be the underpinnings of all that. Um, so when I reached out to the county, that's what kind of sparked the rest of this conversation. Um, council member Schulp, if I can ask you a quick question in terms of just the area near the pool. Are you feeling as if it's the fire lane part that is grabbing people's attention? Or is it the fact that the curb is painted yellow oftentimes with fire lanes?
For sure, the curb painted yellow, but I would think also the, the fire lane.
I just wondered if there was ends up being a desire to do this more comprehensively, if painting the curb in that area yellow would be of any value right now.
Yes, I would believe that would help.
Would there be any opposition from anyone with our proceeding with that step, um? I had spoken to George Miller about this. I think if we were to try to. Um, paint all the curbs yellow where we have parking restrictions, that's not something the staff could do by themselves. Apparently, we actually hired. Um, a contractor, um, a number of years ago, um, the maintenance staff did indicate if it was a fairly isolated area such as this. They could probably handle that themselves.
And does that imply some sort of county enforcement as well?
Or is it just like a visual kind of like, hey, don't do this?
It's a visual cue of you can't park here.
Well, that, that's good. That's a.
I mean, we still have the, the underlying issue of enforcement, but I just thought that might be a good middle step to try to respond to the concern that Phil has raised.
Agreed.
And neighbors can call it strenuously when they have to. They can proclaim it as. A decisive thing.
Well, and I think as, uh, council membership indicated, I think the, the biggest trigger was calling the Montgomery County Police Department. I would say in this particular instance, um, I was out of town the weekend this was occurring. I did follow up with the property owners to let them know that we had received several calls of concern about. Both the parking situation and the noise situation and, um. Hoping that will help alleviate it. Um, no promises, but, uh, I did reach out to them to let them know that there were concerns and that we would. Ask them to take that into consideration when planning future gatherings that there was very restricted parking. In the area of the pool and to share that with their guests that they might need to park some distance away and walk back to their home.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
So if everyone is okay with that, I will talk to George in the morning about, um, painting that section of curb yellow and see if that will provide some relief.
Sounds good. Um, one quick question, chapter thirty-one in brief, what is chapter thirty-one?
It's the county, um, basically traffic enforcement section of their code.
Okay.
So it's, um, we adopted certain sections, um, the county. Um, in part is now questioning that because I, you know, kind of raise this whole broader issue. Um, I need to talk it through with the people who were involved at the time. I know at least the assistant county attorney was part of those discussions about five, six years ago. Um, Ron Bolt's recollection is that we, we only adopted certain sections because that's what the county told us to do. And now the county appears to be questioning why we only adopted certain sections. So hopefully I'll have some clarity by the end of next Wednesday afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item. Uh, Barb, um, you were going to give, this was a complicated thing because it's kind of a new and old.
Um, yes.
Uh, why don't you start with the.
Right, so all of you remember, um, as we discussed last month, that, um, we had to shut down the twisty slide. At Cambria Park back at the end of March because the plastic had separated and it was posing a safety hazard. Um, so it is currently sort of roped off, um, with caution tape. As I mentioned last month, um, I did get a quote from Playground Specialist Inc., which was the original supplier of the play structure. Um, they provided a price quotation of about eleven thousand dollars for the purchase of a replacement slide, delivery and installation. Um, you all had asked me to do, um, two things at your meeting last month. One was to see if I could get alternative quotes. Um, for replacement of the twisty slide, um, as well as what would be a likely cost of a new play structure. Um, in regard to getting other quotes, I did start that process and then learned very quickly from another, um, playground equipment dealer. Um, that that is not doable. Um, the system at Cambria. Um, was actually manufactured by a company called Play World Systems and Playground. Specialist Inc. is their exclusive dealer in this area. Um, so essentially it would be like trying to buy Ford parts and putting them on a Chevy. Um, so if we want to replace the slide, the twisty slider, um, we were looking at about eleven thousand dollars. If you are interested in replacing a slide but at a lower cost, then we could go with a straight slide. That would be less expensive. Um, in answer to the other question, which is what is the cost of an overall play structure? Um, that's a kind of a more difficult question because play structures tend to be very, um, customized by playground. And so it really depends on what do you want? So. Um, you know, the fancier the equipment, the more expensive it is. Um, what I would share with you is that the average commercial play structure has an anticipated life of approximately twenty years. It can obviously go. Less than that as we are finding with our twisty slide, or sometimes it goes more than that. Um, so our play structure was installed on and around early twenty-ten. Um, and talking to Playground Specialist, since they were the ones who we purchased it through. Um, you know, their assessment is there's obviously not anything that's pushing you all to replace the entire structure. What they suggested is that we assess the merit of investing approximately eleven thousand dollars. In one element of an aging structure, and I, I think that's certainly, um, kind of a cost benefit analysis that would be worth doing. In terms of replacing a structure like we have now. Um, we're probably looking, this is sort of a rough order of magnitude cost, probably in the area of fifty, sixty thousand dollars. Um, certainly a play structure, anything of this magnitude, um, you know, would be bid out, um. But I think that's sort of the piece that you all asked me to follow up on. I think in discussing this issue. With the mayor, I think she, um, kind of had a, a broader vision that she wanted to bring forward, and unless there's any questions about. The playground equipment at Cambria, I will turn it over to Mayor Welch.
Um, I do have a question or comment. And, uh, to throw a monkey wrench in the works, unfortunately, but I believe that that was. That playground or some portion thereof was, um, rehabilitated with state funds.
It was, it was program open space funds.
So does that. Obligate us to then have to maintain the structure for its lifetime of twenty years?
Um. Probably, um, you know, obviously structures wear out. I would need to follow up with somebody at DNR and I can certainly do that. Um, I don't think it requires us, I'm discussing here because I'm not the state whose agreement it is, um. I, I don't believe that the state would likely mandate, um. Replacing a component on an aging structure, I think. What they would require is that we maintain some type of plate structure at Cambria for the twenty years, um, that you noted. But I can certainly confirm that with them.
It'd be good to confirm, but I would think they might object if you were, would likely object if you were saying you were taking it away, but they wouldn't object to. It making it equal or better.
But would that prevent them from, or make them less likely to help us pay for? Something in that space if they did something less than twenty years ago? Is that something you could require? If you're going to ask if, you know, what the obligations are, could you just also ask, hey, you know?
Sure, um, you know, in, in my experience, you, you can get. You know, they have two different programs that would be applicable. Um, one is program open space, as council membership alluded to, which is the funding source that was used for the existing Cambria play structure. The other pot of money, which is what we got funding through for Yendel, um, is known as community parks and playgrounds. Um, so. The way they work are very, are very different, um, in terms of program open space and we've. You know, previously indicated that we would use our existing allocation towards Yendel. Um, it, it's basically the funding flows from the state to the county. Each county has its own method of how they distribute money to municipalities. Um, and basically you can have, you get a little bit of, you know, every couple of years, I think Garrett Park's allocation has typically been. Three, four thousand dollars as I recall. And then you can just basically let it accumulate until you have enough money to do something. Community parks and playgrounds, um, is actually a grant program. Um, so you have to apply, um, they've. Cycle is, um, the application cycle is August, um, of each year. And then you're getting in the queue for possible funding for the subsequent fiscal year. Um, community parks and playground is, um, doesn't require a match, program open space does.
Okay, um, so what I would like to propose is that we not. Fix the play or the, that, that play structure at this point, um, but that we take off the twisty slide and block it off. Um, and my reason for that is this entire area, Cambria Park, which, which I'm referring. Cambria Park, when I refer to that, I'm referring to, so basically the space where the mulch pile is next to the playground. All the way to, um. The old tennis courts and Manny's Woods. I'm sort of thinking of that entire space, um, including the. Uh, the ball field and, um. I mean, I, I don't know about maybe the, the parking lot. I'm not quite sure what I'm. But, but what I want to say is that there's, there have been. Concerns expressed about multiple portions of that, and I think this is an opportunity to look at it holistically and think about. Um, what we can do in those spaces and, um, you know, sort of. Fix lots of things at the same time. And, um, so I would like, I would love for this to, um. Uh, I'd like for us to hire a, an architecture firm to look at the space and say, this is what we. Uh, what we recommend. This is what we could do in these places, um.
How are you going to get talent input? I mean, you fired the Costco committee, it's gone. And they were working on things like that and there's volunteers now that can do, and would do that type of work. And you're going to still need community input.
Absolutely, but I just don't, but I don't think that, I think that the community input is. Is better in this, for this kind of project after we've gotten some ideas. The, not that this, I, I think that's the, 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 I think the better. Place to get that community input is after we've, um, after we've had a professional.
I think you're, I, I would go against that. I mean, look at this building. We had plenty of charrettes before we even decided. To, uh, propose something to the, um.
And, and we didn't listen to any of it. Like, I, I mean, I, I just.
I don't know about that yet. I mean, right?
I, I think that, um. It makes more sense and is more respectful of volunteer time. Um, and our time frankly, to let professionals do what professionals do. Um, and, uh, so that's, that's my.
Could, could it be a parallel process where the professionals meet with. Community citizens as well? In other words, can we commission? Uh, some, you know, a committee, an ad hoc committee of citizens to look into this. And accompany that process and help direct the choices that the architecture firm looks at.
Well, I mean, I think the point of having it be a wide open process for. Uh, I don't know, I don't know what kind of architect, what, you know, some design, whoever the appropriate design people are. Is to not saddle them with preconceived notions, um, of, of. You know.
But then who are we trying to sell to?
That's usually the way it works. I mean, I did this for years, working for various like cities and counties doing. Park planning and design, like a lot of times they would have a specific function that they're looking for. And we would design it with certain parameters to it, and then you would have public meetings, you would. You know, show it to your client and or to the public at the different times or the same time, but you would get that feedback kind of after when you're. Starting to look at it again, like, you know, more comprehensively and, um, more with an open mind, like, um. I just find that that's, I would support this because I feel like that's the pretty normal way to do it and it. Maybe makes sense for a lot of other things. We've had a lot of things where, like, um, like the Waverly sidewalk, it, that. Apparently there were people in, within town that were kind of envisioning something that they like, but. Um, I, I didn't even see it.
But it's not, it wasn't necessarily feasible. But it's not, it wasn't necessarily feasible from a, from a, uh, you know, implementation perspective.
Feasible or infeasible, but like some people were almost like treating it as though it was their private property. I didn't even know until like five minutes ago that Pasco was looking at. These areas, so it just. Like, I think there definitely should be. Public input all along, like we shouldn't have some, and, and I think. It seems like this town has like a fear, almost like that there would be some consultant that would do something that's. Completely ridiculous, what nobody wants and nobody will be able to stop this.
They did do that once.
Where?
What?
For the uh, for what is considered the dog park, somebody did have a consultant come in and do something that was. Borderline ridiculous.
What do you, I don't understand what you mean. What, what, what?
So.
The town council didn't authorize that.
No, it was, it was, but I'm saying that when Pasco was in existence previously, that somebody who was the chairman of Pasco came in with a consultant. And basically proposed something that was. So ridiculous, everybody in Pasco. Voted it down and it was because nobody had discussed. With anybody, their overall concepts of what might be going there.
Right, and so that's, that's what we would be asking. These consultants to do is come up with some concepts to present. To us, that we would then be able to mix and match.
And the job would be voted on by the council afterwards, after. Community input, so it seems that would diffuse that problem, right, of. People not being consulted. There would be plenty of candidates to be consulted. There would be options out there. That they could start, there would be a menu. From which they start and then they could alter those parts of it if they want to as well.
But it would be starting with sort of a, uh, uh, but it would be starting with, um, you know, not sky's the limit, but. Without. Without um. Fencing in the designers with. Preconceived notions. Jerry Lee, would you like to um, chime in on this?
Um, yeah. I. I think it's highly unlikely. That we would do something different in the place that the playground equipment is. Or change the use of the ball field. The concern I have with delaying. Um, making the playground equipment fully useful is that those kids grow up really fast. And so the time and process it would take to go through a whole planning process for a larger area. Where the real change of views being considered is not a playground at all. Um, those kids are gonna grow out of the need of playground equipment. So I really think. We owe it to those families with small children to make sure that that park is as useful as possible. Uh, as a playground. Um, as quickly as possible. So that's number one point. Number two, I'm kind of with Phil. I don't understand why we would bring in a consultant into this process. I think we could manage it. Um, as a town. And um, I do think that we already have obligations to do something with Yendal Park. There may be some. Safety issues there at the dog park that, that um. Would give it some priority need. But I think the first thing we need to do is set some priorities. Um, is it more important to get Yendal Park to a certain point of? Um, stability. As maybe a first priority and then dog part to a certain point of safety as a second priority, or to do some planning around the dog park. Anyway, I think we need to have that fundamental conversation before we hire a consultant.
Okay, I, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that there wouldn't, that, that, the. Access to the playground would be taken away. It would just. It would be basically what we have now, except lobbing off the unsafe piece. Um, I mean, the rest of it would stay. Intact until a renovation. Um, I, I, this is. Whatever we do here is a long-term process and it's uh. I, I don't know that. Starting. A look at Cambria Park has to be put at odds with Yendal. Um, I think those are two different things.
Money, money's the first thing because we, we're gonna be scrambling to get money. You know, identify, identify sources and have money for this building we're sitting in. And then we're gonna have roadwork to do, plus Yendel, I mean, it wouldn't make much sense to spend a bunch of money. Yendel's just ends up being a big weed field, so. And then we've got the Grotto property we have to deal with and I don't know what, if anything, needs to be done to that. Aside from some initial vegetation cutting down, but I think when it comes to money and prioritization. Of it. You know, I agree with Jerry Lee. I mean, yeah, look at the dog park in terms of safety and in terms of what might need to be done. That wouldn't uh, be a problem for undoing in the future.
I disagree, actually. I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna disagree on this because um, I don't think that we should just assume that we're going, that the best thing for. This, that fenced in space is for it to remain just a dog park. I think as a community, there's been expressed desire to. Look at alternatives for it and to ju, to stabilize it or make it safer. Um, I think would be. A disservice to those in the community who want to look at it differently. And so. Lumping that, putting that together with a larger look at the full sort of park complex. I think is, is a better use of money, just like not spending eleven thousand dollars to replace one slide. When that eleven thousand could go toward either a fuller piece or fuller structure or part of a larger. Rehabilitation.
Right, kind of.
What I'm suggesting though is that we set priorities before agreeing to hire a consultant.
Agreed.
So this wouldn't be hiring, it would be, it would be putting out an RFP, so it kind of the, the pre-step of hiring. Um, but yes, it does, that does imply that a hiring would be. On, in, coming.
Right, I think Jerry Lee raised an important point about, or an interesting point that I hadn't really thought about with the slide, that it does kind of um. If we just block it off, then kids that would want to use it would be a couple of years probably before. They would get to it and maybe that, and like Jerry Lee also said, it's. Extremely unlikely, we're gonna say that playground is gonna change to something completely different, maybe that is. Maybe that's a good reason to prioritize, just go ahead and, you know, explore the. Replacement of it in total versus doing the slide, but then I would still be very strongly regardless of that playground, I'd be very strongly in. Favor of doing a study like this and possibly even putting in other park places with it, so that then they could be prioritized and. I, I think this town and Town Hall was a great example of it. This town has done. So many things that I find are different than the way they work elsewhere and I, I think it's to our detriment a lot of times we get. We're so, um, the town is so wary of getting any kind of outside voices in it and then. And when that's on one hand, but then it's also, there's a strong desire to have everything kind of done internal, but it's not really. In my experience, it's not really open to all. I think the, to me, like as a personal person, like there, as. Me personally, I think the most important thing to me would be redoing Cambria Field. I think that would get a lot more use, it would get more use even in this building, which is sporadically used. It'll cost like far more, but so I think it would be important to kind of like look at all these kind of things. It's, I noticed a lot of strong proponents in town of. Having a sole-use dog park, but that doesn't mean that all three hundred and sixty households believe that. Um, Yendal Park, I think is even a similar thing, like to me, I was never really personally in favor of. You know, it was a lot, long before my time before that was even picked out, but it gets kind of just an empty lot without house on it between a couple of other houses. I don't. Think it's realistic that. You know, people are gonna go there and do a whole lot, so it just seemed like not really a great benefit to the town overall. So I think it would be helpful to kind of look at. A lot of these things, may, maybe with some outside eyes, a little bit more. Um, different viewpoints than the way they tend to be done. It doesn't mean that you're committing to do any of them, but at least it gets it. A lot of my dad, ideas out there that a lot bigger percentage of the three hundred and sixty households can weigh in.
And the idea of having a consultant, the idea of getting some plans and coming up with something, it gives us something to. Look forward to and, and, and anticipate and to then. The money is not gonna be there right away. And so it kind of gives us a target, something to work toward.
I, I would, I, I, we're past our ten o'clock end time, so I'm gonna be brief and then hope we can. Adjourn soon. But um, I guess I would just say that I agree. In part about the, the playground and that that might, that's a small part of this and that we might want to. Make sure and conserve that as it would seem that most people would favor that anyway. But that beyond that, the rest of the space, which is probably. Eighty or ninety percent of the space we're talking about, it, it is a large space for this community, so we should figure out. And convene a community process which would include the consultants. Having a consultant does not preclude this discussion. It seems like it accompanies the discussion. With data, which would be really helpful. It would be good to have a community-driven discussion. But with people who can, you know, answer questions about how land like this is used in other communities in the area.
So um, uh, thank you for the reminder about the time, Todd. Barb, you talked with um, Council Member Max and she expressed. I don't know if it was, I don't know to what extent her interest was in, um, in, in sort of starting the RFP process for this. Um, but it doesn't sound like there's uh, resounding support at this point, so I don't necessarily want to. You know, um. You know, if this is a, a conversation to uh, to continue at a later point, um, that I, I'm fine with that. Um, I would very much like to move forward because I think that. It's a, the beginning of a very, of a long process and this is just a small piece. Um, do you have a, a recommendation?
Um, I would just share Council Member Max's comment, um, when, when she knew she wouldn't be uh, able to join tonight, she did sort of walk through the various agenda items, including this one. Um, she did share that um, she, she would be supportive of looking at the properties comprehensively as the mayor suggested. Um, we did not talk specifically about carving out um, Cambria and the playground equipment. Um, so I can't speak to what her thoughts are on that angle.
Okay, so.
It does sound like there's varying ideas and that perhaps some further discussion may or might be warranted perhaps in the fall. I think your July agenda is starting to. Get rather robust.
So this is another reason why I'm, I was hoping to sort of start that RFP process because it doesn't obligate us to spending any money. Um, but it does. Sort of move the ball forward, but um, but that's okay. Um, if there's not resounding.
Support for, I mean, what, what is, I mean, how much support do you need?
Well, I mean.
Majority?
I, I mean, I, I. I don't know that. I don't know that we do. I mean, we can put out for an RFP without no money changing hands and.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say that if um, if we were going to. In, invest the staff time into drafting an RFP, it certainly would be helpful to know that. What would go in, that would have majority support, otherwise we're just sort of spinning our wheels.
Okay.
And ultimately the town council needs to provide funding for the hiring of anyone.
Okay, so then let's table this and um. And, and come back to it at some future point. Time is uh, ten thirteen. Council Member Max not here. The update from the town archivist. The amazing event that um, the Archives Committee and. Archivist Claire McDonald put on here a few weeks ago. Um, it was a great turnout and she wants everyone to know that the um. That all the, all the pieces of. Memorabilia are back in the archives, back in order. And this summer she's working on. Uh, changing the way that, that data and, and. Archival material is. Is kept, it's, it's no longer there, she's transitioning to a web-based, a cloud-based uh, storage. She's working on a new exhibit for the lobby for later this summer and um. Just doing some cleaning and tackling some collection processing. Um, Council Member Shulp, um, you sent just a few minutes before the council meeting. Some slides, uh, some concepts for light fixtures for the Waverly Sidewalk. Project, uh, Barbie, you'd mentioned. This sidewalk uh. As. Piece of your um. Town manager report and so I don't, I didn't get a chance to process what you sent to us from the engineer.
Yeah, I think Council Member Shulp has a um, probably more easily um. The red version of what I sent you all. Phil, would you like to make, want me to start sharing the screen?
Yeah, cuz I'll go through it really fast. I mean.
That'd be great.
I was gonna, I just wanna uh, just point out something, a couple of things real quick. Okay, if we can go to the next.
Go on.
Okay, so just in brief. What we're looking at there is, is a simplified version of the new sidewalk layout. Alls I basically did was I put in some colors to show things. To show various things, uh, various features there. So uh, the two red things are the tennis courts. The gray thing that you see snaking along, that's a new sidewalk and you can see. Um, where the widths are, but basically you're looking at five to seven feet for the narrowest portions. Of green space between the edge of Waverly and uh, the new sidewalk. And I did a, two different shades of green on the lower portion to indicate the town's lot. Versus the um. The county-owned or parks planning lots. And the two yellow portions are the two existing um, stairways and sidewalks. That we will en, end up having to do something with the top of them, probably a little bit to match it up. The stuff on the upper portion, uh, the green is basically just indicating some residents and residences and um. You know, private property across. So that, it's, it's literally the exact same thing. The only thing I did was, I did some coloration of it. Um, two things to note, you'll see a blue line, which you probably can't see in this picture, but when you get the slide, you'll see it. The blue line along Waverly just indicates that the um, we're putting a, a curb in there, the plans that put a vertical curb in there. And then you'll see a red line along the edge of the sidewalk, which is closest to us or closest to the bottom and that indicates the. Um, six-inch-high safety curb that would be put in, in lieu of having to put in a specific handrail. The only spot that we'd have to put in a handrail that we know of right now would be on the. Left yellow thing above the tennis court and so you'll see the words handrail in there and it has to do specifically with that piece. The rest of it would be a six-inch-high safety curb, the same as you would see if you turn the corner onto Montrose. If you go. Any questions on that? Cuz that's really the biggest thing because it'd be nice if we could figure out between now and July, we could look at trying to get done. I'll just back up one please. It, we try and approve the alignment for the sidewalks, so the, the engineer could work on the bid drawings, so. I was hoping that in July we could uh. Approve that and then move forward with trying to get some bid drawings done. I'll go to the next thing just briefly. So the next thing, what it shows is it shows the, the light turquoise blue circles indicate existing um. Overhead lighting and then the um, all the white circles would indicate. Light that would come out from, say, a Ballard-style fixture. Uh, and then the next group of slides, which you can go through at your. Leisure, this indicates how I selected the stuff that you're about to see and then. The following slides indicate, and this is all from a report I did on December seventh of twenty-two. Um, but the, all the pictures except for the, the very last one are all from that report. The text is all from that report. So you can go through that at your leisure. Um, what I would like to do is to then talk about. Ideas as far as what do we want to do is lighting this thing up and my proposal was these low-flying. Uh, fixtures or luminaires and there's ten of them. Um, except for the last one, I happened to find at a gas station when it was on a business trip. So I threw that one in because I also know it looked kind of nice and it was um, quite solid. But these were ideas that just kind of go across the map and the thought was to. To look at the Ballard-style fixtures and then come up with some general style idea and then I could, or somebody else could go research some more of it. But for right now, approval of the sidewalk alignment so that we could get a bid package together. And then um, we can talk some more about the type of lighting to be put in later on. And then um, we can talk some more about the type of lighting to be put in later on.
Um, okay, so um.
That's the one I found at the, that's the one I found at a gas station.
So Barb, if you could send these, uh, this around, um, and we already have the sort of the more
You've got the.
The more technical uh concept drawing. And so what Jason needed from us was confirmation that what he drew is what we said we wanted, right? Okay.
Comments to it, I can share around whether, whether or not everybody else agrees or not. At least I'll just make them, but.
Okay, but um, the, a reminder that the, the sidewalk, this, the portion of approving the sidewalk will include conduits for lighting that we will do concurrently, but the lighting itself is not uh, a, a piece that the engineer is incorporating directly. It's the conduit that is is, is the only piece that the engineer, that, that we need to decide on in advance. And I agree that if we can, if there's room in July, um, it shouldn't be the, the biggest of discussions, I don't think, to approve this concept. I don't even know if we need, do we, I don't even think we need to have a, a formal vote on that because it's something we already said we wanted. It's just matching it up.
But don't we need to vote on the, the project itself?
No, we have, yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah. This is long, long ago. Okay, sorry, Barb, you're, you're muted. Did you want to say something?
Sorry, um, yeah, I think you're correct, Joanna. I don't think that um you know, in terms of the fundings there, but clearly you all gave some direction at the last meeting and I think um, in discussing this with Jason, and I agree with him, I think it was important that you all see what visually, what that decision looks like and make sure everybody's comfortable before Jason starts um really getting into detailed plan sets and bid drawings. Um, I just don't, you know, want us to have to go back and reverse any work he did. So um, thank you to Phil for um, I guess Phil adding the colors, it did make it a lot more appealing to look at than the black and white drawing um I sent out.
So, but do we, since I mean, if what we're doing is matching up what we said we wanted last month with what Jason did and submitted and gave us, it's just kind of, we're just double-checking it. So does that require us to do anything other than everybody look at it and give a thumbs up? And can that be done over email individually? Um, sorry, Jerry Lee, you raise your hand.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, 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 please, that was, go ahead.
I just had a question. I know in a previous meeting, we had a conversation about whether it might be nice to add any curvature. Um, was that considered and are we now ruling that out, maybe for engineering reasons?
Um, no, it was considered. I think the constraint, um, you know, when I received everything from Jason, um, there is and I think most of, you know, I think you probably recognize this going into this, but when you widen the sidewalk and there's obviously varying, you know, planting strips now, but when you add a foot, um, you're not gonna have much more severe curves, if you will, or more pronounced curves, maybe a better way of describing it. Um, because in some areas, as Phil was indicating, there's, you know, you're anywhere from five to seven feet. Is that correct, Phil?
Yes, and I guess to put it quite literally, you don't have a lot of wiggle room in those narrow areas.
Pun intended.
Yes.
But it does, it turns your curb kind of into a retaining wall cuz you're further out and off the slope and you gotta do more. I mean, one of, one of my comments, it's gonna come, is I, I don't really support or understand the need to wiggle at five to seven feet. I think it's gonna it's kind of not really good design to me and I, the dipsy doodles over, that were done for some reason over on Oxford still don't make any sense to me. That my understanding is they came in late in a project. I think that's, there's been years of talk of the idea that we would have these curvilinear sidewalks. What originally that started was is you wanted to avoid the very like kind of um civil engineered look where maybe you would go straight and when you hit a tree, you would make a hard left and a hard right and go around it. You would make more something where you, you see it coming in the path and it kind of weaves its way around it, but doing a, a curve for just the sake of not being straight, I just don't I don't support that at all, design-wise. And I might be the only one in the end, but like would never do that in a professional office, so.
So what's needed from us? Is, is it, is it for council members to look at this and let you know if they agree that what was designed was what we said we wanted last month, or is this coming, does this need to come back for further discussion of, oh, well, now that we see it visually, that's not really what we want? What is the?
I mean, I think, I, I, I think the issue that Stephen just raised, I think, is the reason why Jason wanted to do a give you all a new updated concept design so that you could see visually what this would look like. Um, so I, I do think there may be some benefit, Joanna, to having this come back un- unless you all want to do that tonight, but um to kind of have this, you know, everyone react the same way Stephen did and say, yes, I either really like the slightly gentle curving, or I don't think it has any value. Um, so I'm not pushing one way or the other, but I think that's you all made certain decisions. I think what Jason wanted to do is to have you all see that on paper and see when you saw all the different changes together, um, does it work for you? Is it what you want?
Stephen, any of us wants, but you know, what makes sense.
Well, what makes sense.
Maybe that's just me, me saying it.
Okay, well, so there are three council members who have not said that they oppose it. Do you three want to vote now and say, this looks good? Let, let Jason run?
Well, Stephen, what else did you have? You had some other comments?
But I don't, I don't wanna, I mean, like, if this is, if it's more than just um a, we love it and let's vote, say then, then, then I don't want to have a further discussion.
If it helps, I could email it quickly, you know, soon, but not talk about today.
But we'll, we'll talk about in July.
That, yeah, I think this predates me and I'm willing to accept whatever the judgment of
We can bring you up to seed. We can, but we.
So I support it.
You su- okay.
It looks fine. I, my questions would be about the cost-effectiveness of the slope and about other things, but it seems like the train has left that station and everyone has done a good job. So I'm not gonna add anything.
Sort of, but my, part of my other commentary would be about the slope, doing it a different way.
Jerry Lee, do you like the um, the, the, the concepts that Jason uh presented and sent to us last Friday? And want to go ahead and prove that?
Yeah, I support that.
Okay, so you, okay, and Phil, do you um approve the concept drawing that, that, that?
I'm fine with it, yeah.
Okay, all right, and.
Sure.
All right, so.
One strong no.
So one strong no and three yeses. Um, so we don't need to bring this back in July because we just approved it. So please tell Jason that he may proceed.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay, um, and on that note, the time is ten twenty-eight and we are adjourned.